This is a special meeting conducted as today the whole meeting for the city of Southfield, City Council, and it's February the 22nd, 2016. Senator Clark, would you please call them up?
Yes, Councilman Cruz.
Present.
Councilman Brightwell.
Here.
Councilman Fracassi.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Morris.
Here.
Councilman Mandelbaum.
Here.
Councilwoman Seymour.
Councilwoman.
Council President Fraser.
Here.
We have seven members present.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is Green Trees North Homeowners Association right-of-way sign placement request, and Mr. City Administrator, do you want to?
Yeah, Michael Mannion and our Director of Community Relations will be handling this item. City Relations has typically and historically worked with private associations on their entry welcome signs.
Okay. Mr. Mannion, you have the mic.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council President, City Council. Before you, we have requests this evening from Green Trees North to erect a entranceway sign through the city's entranceway grant program on a city right-of-way. Such a request on a city right-of-way does require council approval, that is why this request is before you this evening. There are funds in the grant matching program for the city. Should you approve this request, you do have funds to pursue with that. If council does approve this right-of-way sign placement request, it would still need to go through the grant approval process. We have with us here this evening Mr. James Small and Mr. Chris Kerstwitch from Green Trees North, as well as Ed Gardell, the building sign inspector, to present the immediate request. Mr. Small? And I should mention, we also passed out the request in front of me there as well, and it just showed the sign in the placements as well.
Could you gentlemen would come to the microphone and give us your name and address with a record?
My name is James Small, I live in 30465 Red Maple Lane.
And my name is Chris Kerstevich, I live in 19160 Elbridge Court.
Okay. It's your turn.
At this time, we're requesting permission to erect the sign. This is where two subdivisions join together. This is where Red Maple Lane turns into North Gate. It's over the creek, right there, like I said, where Red Maple Lane turns into North Gate. We'd just like to establish our subdivision. It's actually Cranbrook Village North, and that's the reason for the request.
Okay. You have anything?
No, sir. Mr. Small, set up a microphone.
Okay. Uh, council.
I don't know.
And, uh, Miss Moore.
How many funds are within your subdivision?
Three hundred and twenty-two.
Mr. Brightwell?
Look at those trees. Are these options or are these?
The sign that we actually decided on is numbered. And the pictures below are actually where they have the subdivision sign. So if I'm both going to be like that, okay.
Mr. Cruz. There's a question maybe to your, Mr. Mannion, I don't know. Is there going to be landscaping, request dollars for any landscaping around the sign or?
Uh, right now, it's probably just going to be grass, that's it.
Um, anyone?
Yeah.
Well, shouldn't.
Uh, oh, Miss Seymour?
So what we note here on?
That was just, this regarding.
Do you want, do you want the capital T?
Uh, no, it's just going to be Green Trees, one word.
One word.
That's it.
Uh, I'd like to call our sign expert to the, to the microphone to see if, to hear his.
Yeah, I just wanted, if I might, to the council, just wanted to add that it is within our sign ordinance requirements for the entry marker program. So it's actually a little bit smaller than what we would be permitted, so we see this type of sign throughout the city in the entryway program, so it's consistent with what's been installed in the past.
Okay.
Do you think it's too large?
Uh, no, actually, I think it's the right size. If you look at the width of the green belt, I don't think you could actually make it any wider, because then it would start projecting over either the sidewalk or the.
It could a little bit, but I just.
Yeah.
It's very heavy and you think it's enough, that it's enough to identify?
Yes, I think so, because you're reading it once you drive up to it, you're on a 25 mile an hour street, so.
Okay, now, I have a couple of questions. The, the sign, is your subdivision behind the sign?
That's correct.
So when you pass the sign, then you're into your subdivision?
Right. Initially, when we started getting requests for the sign and the design, we actually approached the Cranbrook Village to see if they wanted their name put on the other side of the sign, so when you're entering their subdivision, they can see that. But they declined.
Okay. Um, what is it, what are the standards, the posts that hold up the sign, what are they made of?
Uh, it's going to be womanized wood.
Womanized wood?
Okay.
So, um, this, uh, it has to be something that would collapse if an automobile ran into it, so went on to cause, fix one problem to cause another one, so.
If I might?
Mr. Sign Expert here, are you satisfied with?
Sure. They will have to have the standards for, they generally drill through them to make them right-of-way posts, and that's something that I make sure when I go out and do my inspection, that that's done to the actual posts, so like the right-of-way posts.
Okay. And, uh, Mr. Mannion?
Yes.
You're, you're satisfied with the design of the sign and?
Yes, I, I think it's a very nice sign. I think it will actually, as Mr. Small mentioned, it's, the thought here is really to distinguish between the two different associations, and in looking at it, I think it would benefit both of the subs, just for that line of notification. So, uh, we're very pleased with the look of the sign, as I said, it has gone through the process thus far, but being that it is a request in the right-of-way, it does need council approval. Uh, and as I mentioned from the onset, it would have to continue to go through the city's entranceway grant program, uh, the rest of that, should you approve it. But I don't anticipate any issues there. Uh, we do have funding, and it is within line of the city's program.
Okay, is it a, is the funding like a 50/50?
Yes, it's a 50/50 match grant program.
Okay, and you're, you're aware of that?
Yes.
50/50, maybe?
Is it Green Trees North on the front and the back?
No, just on one side, as you're entering into the, so if you're going north-west, you'll see that you're entering Green Trees North. So if you're, in other words, when, if you're traveling North Gate onto Red Maple Lane, you will see Green Trees North.
Mr. Brightwell?
Um, what is the, what is the?
They didn't actually give me a warranty on the sign, but it's made out of a high-density material, high-density, you were famous, Mr. Tom.
It's a deterioration, not some over period of time you will keep track of.
Exactly. Need to be repainted everywhere.
Exactly. So that is within your.
Oh, absolutely.
Protocol.
Uh, Mr. Council.
Will there be a backing on this, or will you be looking at the back of, of the?
It'll just be the posts on one side.
You see both posts on one side?
No, the sign, as you're going in from, uh, North Gate into, onto Red Maple Lane, you will see the sign saying Green Trees North. And on the opposite side, all you're going to see is the post and, you know, the backing of the sign.
What would be in color?
It'll be green.
It'll be rolled into the post.
Yes.
Okay.
If I may interject, Councilman Fracassi, that is typical of many signs throughout the city as well.
I know that, but just, you see, look at the back of the post, if you're in the adjoining subdivision, it's kind of a distraction.
Right. That was, that was the reason why we approached the other subdivision, to see if they wanted to have their sign put on the other side.
Almost let it cost to just have another oval behind it to, on the other side of it. Kind of blend in.
The other side could say leaving.
That's the only way out, right?
Well, the.
You'll never meet me next week.
Yeah, I know.
We do this.
Yeah. The thing is, uh, for this, I don't think we need to invite him back, so I'm going to make all of you fall off your chairs, and I'll entertain a.
I'm over a little. You, my red.
It's been moved by Mr. Fracassi, it's been supported by Mr. Cruz, that we find an immediate need to act. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Green Trees North plaque here, and that there'd be also a backing to it, that remorse of the post.
Uh, are you prepared to do that?
Support, some.
Uh, do I have a support?
I say.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Fracassi, and supported by Ms. Seymour, that we approve the Green Trees North sign be placed in the public right-of-way with the addition of a backing behind the post, so you don't see the post at the sign. So the, the backing will cover up the post.
We're agreed.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is carried. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right?
Take good care of your neighborhood.
All right, Mandelbaum, are you all set for that? That's in your?
No.
Huh?
That's not mine.
Oh, yeah, your, your, your board's. Okay, that's the time you want to. Okay.
Mr. President, November 19th, the city issued an RFP for, for our solid waste disposal. On January 6th, the Purchasing Department opened the proposal for solid waste and exaltation services. Mike Ross, Mike Ross, Mike Sable from Rossack, is here to present. You have a brief PowerPoint?
No.
Okay.
Verbal presentation.
He's here to go through the recommendations and of the proposal. We have carts in the next room.
Yes, sir. Are you ready for it?
If you would state your name and address for the, your business address for the record?
Yes, sir, Mike Sable, the General Manager of Rossack. As Mr. Seymour said, our address is at 20,000 West 8 Mile, Southfield, Michigan, 4075. So you may recall, I was here back in the fall to talk about your solid waste contract that you currently have with Waste Management, that expires June 30th for this year. At that meeting, the consensus of the City Council was to seek competitive proposals for services. It had been sometimes the city's stock proposals, the existing contract was last awarded through a public bidding process that took place in 2008, and three years ago, the city extended that contract for three years, as was permitted under the existing contract, and again, it expires June 30th. So we worked with the city purchasing department administration to develop a request proposal that continues the high-quality services to which your residents are accustomed, that incorporates best practices in the latest industry trends, and it takes advantage of the competitive marketplace of private sector service providers. The service specifications essentially mirror the existing service that your residents get with an improvement in services by offering the opportunity to move from recycling bins to recycling carts, as we've discussed in the past, as considered best practices. We put that proposal together in two, two fashions. One, option one would be what we call an opt-in approach, where homeowners that wanted to move from a cart to, from a bin to a cart for recycling, could do so at their choosing, but if they wanted to retain their bin, they, they could do so. And the other option was to see what it would cost if we just took away all the bins and gave everybody a cart all at once. So we wanted to see what the price points would be if we did one versus the other. The request proposal also included the typical municipal services that are provided with your waste contract for city facilities, Department of Public Works, the library, those types of, you know, roll-off and trash recycling dangers. We included in the proposal, request proposal, five-year pricing with one three-year extension option, which is consistent with what the city's current contract is with its current service provider. That request proposal was issued by your Department of Purchasing, November 19th, 2015. Those proposals were opened January 6th of this year, and you have four of five companies that submitted documentation, included pricing for services. One of those five companies no bid everything. Of those four, three submitted valid proposals for option one, and three submitted valid proposals for option two. They went the same three in both cases. For option one, and I'll talk a little bit more about how option one would work, which is the proposal that we're ultimately recommending you avail yourselves of. Republic Services and Waste Management, your current service provider, did not submit a valid option one proposal. Waste Management did submit an alternative proposal, alternate one, that did not include any recycling carts. The lowest proposal you received was from Rizzo Environmental Services, and we have representatives from, from Rizzo here this evening that I can introduce you to in a moment. They were 18.5% below the next lowest valid option one proposal. That company was in Terra, they're based out of Genesee County, they're a North American firm with their parent company in Canada. And they were 7.3% below the alternate proposal from Waste Management, which again, didn't include recycling carts. We're recommending that you use option one for a variety of reasons. One is the lowest proposal that you receive in terms of cost. Two, it allows the transition to recycling carts, which is considered best practices in the industry. It's, it generates more recycling, it's more convenient for your homeowners, and it generally is easier, more efficient system for collection. But what we like about option one is it's an opt-in approach, so for those homeowners that don't want a cart, for those homeowners that may not wish to recycle, we're not incorporating the cost of buying more than 17,000 carts into your contract cost, but rather, we're deploying those carts on a request basis for those homeowners that wish to recycle. The, that's a fairly reasonable approach when you're looking to change, and again, it allows homeowners to continue to recycle with their bins if they wish to. The company that were, that was your lowest proposer, Rizzo Environmental Services, they, they serve a number of communities here in southeast Michigan. They're a company that goes back about 50 years. They've been serving a number of communities in Detroit metropolitan area, and so we took the opportunity to talk to a number of them to find out what their service quality was. We got very positive reviews from everybody involved. Give you an idea of some of the communities we talked to directly, City of Royal Oak, Bloomfield Township, City of La Bonia, Village of Milford, Milford Township, and Plymouth Township. Village of Milford and Milford Township, by the way, you may, you may recall our new Rossack members and the administrators in both of those communities expressed great satisfaction with their service. I thought the City of La Bonia was particularly worthy call to make, because they just transitioned last fall as a result of a public procurement process from being a Waste Management customer to being a Rizzo customer, and they expressed good results with the change, with the service and the. So having said that, my, my recommendation goes down to the following, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. We, we're recommending, for a variety of reasons, cost, service, responsiveness to the RFP, that the council accept the option one proposal from Rizzo Environmental Services, that the council authorize the administration to negotiate an eight-year contract for residential solid waste and recycling collection disposal services with option one, as specified in the RFP and the RES proposal, including municipal site and special refuse and recycling services, and that the City Council authorize the mayor, city clerk to execute the contract, subject to review and approval by the city attorney. Before I answer any questions, I would also like to open this door and bring out a cart so you get an idea about what a recycling cart looks like. Now, this, this happens to be one of Rizzo Environmental Services' stock recycling carts. You'll notice a couple of things. On the lid, our guidelines as to what goes in the cart, in our communities, we typically make sure that this matches what's acceptable in the program. It includes the city's Department of Public Works telephone number, so if a resident has any service issues, the number's right there for them to call. They all have lids, they all have wheels, they roll very nicely through the snow and through the weather. Carts are durable, the contractor will retain replacement maintenance responsibility for this cart. Again, only those residents that want a cart would be, would get one, and the carts can come in whatever color the city deems appropriate. This happens to be red, it's Rizzo's corporate colors, but you'll see that the manufacturer of these carts can make them in pretty much whatever color you want. Typically, green, blue, black are the most common colors you'll see with red, and occasionally you'll see a few pink ones. With that, I'd, I'd like to answer any questions that you may have, and we, again, I'd like to introduce Don Beretta and Mary Jo Van Natta are in the back of the room, both with Rizzo Environmental Services, and they can answer any questions that you may have for them as well.
Mr. Ray.
Hi, good morning. Curious about the carts. Before we had a discussion, and there was a weight limit that people would pick up, now, are these going to be machine picked up by the truck?
Yes.
Okay, so that was one of the issues before the larger.
Yeah, with, with one of these carts full, and they, and they come in different sizes, but this is the stock size, this is sort of the just right, you know, the words just right, size. With this full, it's, it's light enough that anybody in this room could wheel this out of their garage, or out from behind the house, or out of their shed, no problem. They are, because of the bulk, they're generally picked up with what we call a cart tipper. There's two ways that's done. One is with an automated arm that just goes down to and grabs it. In many cases, though, you use a modified system where you have a retrofitted truck in a community like Southfield, for example, where you may have both bins and carts. You're going to have a guy getting out of the truck. If it's a bin, he's going to grab it manually and pick it up. If it's, if it's a cart, he'll typically use a mechanical cart tipper to tip it in the same place he would have tipped that bin. So they can accommodate both with the same vehicle, and that would be the plan. As far as the weight limit goes, you know, as long as, as long as it fits in the cart, you can close the lid, they're good to go.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Fracassi.
Yeah, the, the rewards, is there a cost to the city?
No, that is an add-on service that the contract, your potential contract is proposing. It's a, it's a, for those of you in the room that aren't familiar with rewards or recycling, it comes in various names. You'll see it called Recycle Bank, you'll see it called Rewards Recycling. It's basically an incentive bonus program that haulers and private sector entrepreneurs have developed to reward residents for recycling. In this case, it's a, it's a, it's an online system where residents log onto the system, report that they've recycled that week, and then they earn points and coupons and towards, towards incentives that will be made available to them, both online and or through the mail. In some cases, there is a cost associated with that, and the vendor estimates it's worth about 35 cents per household, per month, which would be pretty costly, and I wouldn't recommend it if it were included as a cost item. But in this case, the vendor is offering to include that as an add-on service at no cost, of which your residents can avail themselves. And, and we think it does increase recycling modestly, and certainly is a nice feature for those residents that choose to use it. Frankly, the, the move to carts really caused a big increase in recycling, because, I mean, it's just human nature, when your bin's full, the rest has to go in the trash, right? But with this, you've got more room, you're going to recycle more. So there's, the rewards for recycling would be something that if, if the council chose to follow our recommendation, we would recommend that that be included in the contract, but with language that stipulates that there's no additional cost to the homeowner or the city for being, for having access to that service.
Is that popular in the cities that are using it or having it?
It varies from city to city. I, I will tell you that the penetration isn't deep, and I will also tell you that in those communities that are paying for that, many of them eventually opt out, because it's not something worth paying. I know the City of Ann Arbor had it a few years back with one of the Rewards Recycling's competitor, Recycling Bank, and they were paying about a quarter million dollars a year, if memory serves me correctly, for that service, and they eventually found it to be cost prohibitive. Now, there were certainly residents that liked it and availed themselves to the service, and for those residents that do use it, it is popular, but in terms of widespread penetration, it's not, it's not something that everybody's going to use, but, but many people will, and if it doesn't cost the city anything, it's, it's worth, you know, allowing to be built into the system.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Brightwell?
Yeah, I know, this, this came to the finance committee, I think we questioned Mike pretty good that day. But I want to just follow up on one of the items, that this whole is performance measurement.
Yes, sir.
How do we, what, what, what is on the measurement points, and how do we get access to the data, what do data go to our administrator?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's several different ways we measure performance. First of all, built into the RFP and built into your contract, as is in your current contract, there are certain service specifications that they have to make, and they have to be done by a certain day. You have to, you can't be out before a certain time in the morning, but you got to be done by a certain time in the day. If you, you know, if you break it, you fix it, you know, if you damage the road, you got to fix the road. If you break somebody's container, you got to replace it. I mean, there's a whole suite of performance specifications that the contractor has to follow. And the way we know whether they're following them or not are through a variety of mechanisms. Certainly, one of them is just simply calls into the Department of Public Works. If a resident has a service issue, they call the Department of Public Works, that gets logged in by the city staff, and then that is communicated to the waste hauler's route supervisor that's assigned to this city, so he can then communicate directly with those drivers and correct that, that issue. And so that in addition to performance bonds, the tracking of the service quality through the Department of Public Works and through our office and the administration, we know whether or not they're abiding by the contracts, and there are mechanisms built in the contract to penalize the hauler financially when they're not meeting those conditions, and there are mechanisms built into the contract to allow the city to cancel the contract if there are repeated offenses. Beyond that, we also can measure the overall program performance in terms of some of the broader metrics. We get reports from the hauler as to the amount of materials being collected for disposal, and we get that on a monthly basis reported to our office, and then we track that on the city's behalf, and then report that to the city regularly. We get the yard waste numbers that are reported to us directly on a monthly basis, and the same thing, and as well as the recycling numbers. The recycling numbers are easy, real easy to get, because those go through our facility at Evergreen, and we get the scale reports on a daily basis and on a monthly basis, so we can track those numbers. And then we also get what is a really important metric is the, what we call the set-out rate of the recycling days, in this case, with recycling carts. We will know on a regular basis how many homeowners are recycling, so we know on any given route day, 25, 55, whatever the number is, percent of the homeowners are actually recycling and using either their bin or their cart, so we can, we can measure the popularity of the recycling program.
So this, this data given to the Department of Public Works, you know, the administrative on a regular basis?
Absolutely.
So we can try.
Yes, yes.
Another item that came up, and I, uh, to the finance committee, I think I asked the question, and I want to clarify to ask it again. What is the age of their fleet, the trucks? Maybe, you have, you have reps here, can I get an idea of the age of the fleet?
Yeah, and Don, Don can come up, and Don can give you a more precise information. Certainly, many of the trucks that will be deployed, even correct me if I'm wrong when he gets up there, but many of the trucks that would be deployed would be new or like new. We also have quality specifications built into the contract, so, you know, at the end of the day, the city has control over the types of vehicles that are traversing the neighborhoods of the city and make sure that they're of, of good maintenance and quality.
Diesel, yes.
And they'll be, they'll be diesel, they'll be diesel vehicles, and, and Don can introduce himself and perhaps give you more specific information?
Yeah, if you give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Don Beretta with Rizzo Environmental Services, Services, 6200 Elbridge, Sterling Heights, Michigan. Good evening to Honorable Mayor and Council. The truck, the fleet that's going to come to Southfields, they're going to be all new. That's the yard waste trucks, recycling trucks. That's the yard waste trucks, recycling trucks, and trash trucks. And our average age of our fleet is around three and a half years. So we try to replace them. Mike, we had talked a little bit. We have a maintenance program where we like to roll the trucks over. And Mike said, well, are you going to have the trucks ready for Southfield if we're fortunate enough to get that awarded to us? And yes, we do, because we have a number of trucks coming in right now to upgrade our fleet. What will happen is if we're, you know, fortunate enough to be awarded Southfield, those trucks will come right into here and we'll, we'll order our next batch to upgrade our fleet, the remainder of our fleet. So they're, they're all new, they're coming in here. There's a bunch of them coming in brand new, and it should be here in plenty of time to start diapers.
Now, how will you, how will you educate the community about this flip over?
A number of ways. One is built into the request proposal, we'll, we'll engage the hauler and use resources that they can make available in terms of both material, information, and financial resources to help educate people through a variety of means. One of the ways will obviously be to work with Mr. Mannion and the administration to use the suite of outreach and education avenues that the city has. And we also will be doing that directly with the community as well. As I mentioned in our finance committee meeting, we have a grant from the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality through their pollution prevention program to do an outreach and education program right here in the city of Southfield to try and increase recycling. That will involve a direct mail piece to the homeowners, talk about recycling, why they should recycle, how they should recycle. In this case, how to get a bin if they don't have one, and if they want a cart, how to get a cart. We'll also be meeting directly with the homeowners association as part of that grant. We're on track to meet directly at their homeowners association meeting between now and the summer to let them know about the program, about the new carts, and what goes in the carts. And again, we'll have labeling on the carts themselves. We also are engaged in a, you know, social media through Facebook and Constant Contact, direct mail, electronic newsletter every month that goes right to those homeowners that have signed up for that. We'll work with the public relations department here in the city. And then the other thing that we just deployed within the past two weeks is a new search tool on our website that can be available on all of our city's websites that includes a mobile app that can be downloaded either through Google Play or the Apple App Store, that people can get on there, find out information about how to recycle, what to recycle. If they have a material, they just type it in. And if it's, say, plastic bottles, it'll tell them where they go. They go in recycling. And if you want to find out more information, there's a homepage on there. People can get information about the programs in more detail, get information about the city in more detail. So it's that broad suite of reaching out to the homeowners. We think that this is, you know, services can, and service is only good if residents have the information they need at their disposal, and that's our intent.
Mr. Cruz.
Just one question about the bin. So is there going to be a separate one for solid waste? Or residents still supplying their own for that? Just asking for the recycled bin here if they would like it?
Yes, yes, sir, it's the latter. We feel that the city is well-served by maintaining most of its existing service specifications. Homeowners like their own trash can, they like to only set out one bag of trash if that's all they have. We don't think that the city would be well-served by giving everybody big trash carts. That works in some cities, some cities not as well. We find that that's a bigger change than just allowing people to opt in for a larger recycling cart. I always put it this way, to tell homeowners that, you know, you remember that recycling cart or bin that we gave you years ago? If you want a bigger bin, you can, or a cart, you can have one. Or if you need a new one, you can get it replaced. But it's a different conversation to have with a homeowner. If you say, you remember that trash can you bought last week at Home Depot? You can't use that anymore because you, now you have to have the trash cart that we're giving you. That doesn't go over quite as well. So we want to continue with the service specifications to which your residents are accustomed. The only change really is, we're recommending is an upgrade to allow homeowners to go from the bin to the cart for recycling only, should they choose to do so.
And just also other things, can we speak to some of the background or track record in terms of community involvement or partnership with the city? I mean, is there, can we speak to any efforts that they have done in terms of communities they work with or sponsor, and sort of activities that the city's been...
Yeah, we sponsor programs in almost all the communities that we service and have since we've, you know, been awarded those contracts. Whether it's with the one that we just, that was just brought up the other day, and the bid opening was an arts, an arts theater that we had donated to in Sterling Heights. But yeah, we, we work with all the communities, whatever the functions are. We look at them and we have rained along, supported the communities that we service, absolutely. The other, the other positive response I got from some of their current customers was their responsiveness to the city's needs in unusual circumstances. You recall the big flood of 2014? The city of Southfield, by and large, dodged a bullet, but some of your neighboring communities, not so much. And, you know, they had to rely on contractors to help them with that disaster. And the customers, the Rizzo customers to whom I spoke, spoke very highly of Rizzo Environmental Services' response during that crisis. And I think that's an important aspect of the capacity that the company has to be the service provider for the community needs.
Mr. Mayor.
I have a question for Mike and the administration and Rizzo. The trash, here, I'll direct this to the city administrator. Our, the trash collection fee is on our tax bills. So this contract is for a considerable 18, something for soundless. So I'm assuming that our taxpayers may see a reduction on their tax bill for rubbish collection?
You are correct. You are currently paying, I believe, $186. There will be a substantial savings. We ran some preliminary numbers, and for sake of this evening's conversation, it's substantial.
I think that's, you know, this isn't voted on yet, but should this contract be awarded, I think that's something that, not just let it happen, that also, oh, a lot of people don't even notice what the rubbish is on their tax bill. I think that's something that should be promoted. Right, Mr. Chairman?
It's a fee instead of a tax.
Yeah, exactly, that it should be promoted.
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
Well, we can talk about it later.
Okay, I'm not counting. The, for the gentleman from Rizzo. Personally, I've enjoyed some great customer service from, from Waste Management in terms of, as a homeowner. A tree fall, and they were, they were just extra great. I was helping get rid of that, you know, the tree out of the curb. But some of it was a little farther from the curb because obviously it was a mess. So you're prepared to do them pickups, the chipper?
Yes. I can tell you, if you ask Mr. Rizzo, if it's on at the curb, what should we do? His answer will always be, pick it up and make it go away, unless it's handled.
And then we, you know, here, we've had a long stand, you know, you put a refrigerator out or a couch, and then you're prepared to do that as well.
That is correct.
And this is one that's caused us some trouble. Either an eviction or a house cleanout where maybe somebody's died and the family just puts all kinds of stuff at the curb. And sometimes it's not picked up in a timely fashion. Do we have assurance that this will get picked up the day it's put out there? I mean, on the regular day of trash pickup?
I mean, it should, yes. Yeah, occasionally, if the supervisor comes, comes across something that is, that takes up the entire width of the property, he may get with your DPW director first, and whatever he instructs us, that's what we'll do. If it needs to pick it up the same day, we'll back two trucks up to it and load it up.
Well, just last week, we had two houses on Melrose, by everything. It sat for over six months. And then the complaints start to come in because the stuff tends to spread. You get winds, the stuff tends to blow around, and you get... And then, Mike, can you give us a status report on the eight-mile facility?
Absolutely. And I would like to follow up, though, additional answer to your question about existing service and what it would look like in the future. Because the contract service specification largely remains unchanged. I mean, your homeowners should expect to see no change in terms of the quality of service and the types of service. And that was our number one goal going into this, to make sure that our homeowners got the same high-quality service to us they've been accustomed to. And so your question proposal, your service contract, all will maintain that same level of obligation on your vendor. And the only difference would be that it's a different colored truck at a lower price point than what you're currently enjoying. And so we don't expect to see any diminishment in the quality of service. And in fact, you know, depending on who you talk to, there very well may be some improvements. So in terms of our eight-mile location, we're moving ahead very well. The last report that I got from the project manager, because we're going through installing new processing equipment, is that they are on track for March 23rd.
March 23rd?
March 23rd, which means then what we'll have is, you know, a week or so of testing the equipment out before we're fully live and we can tell all the haulers to resume bringing the material back to our location. We already know from our private sector operator that there's going to be enough volume to track that facility to merit two shifts of processing. Only one shift of trucks come in, I want to make that clear, that, you know, by our agreement with the city, we only have trucks going in and out of that place from the curbside routes, you know, during, during the day. But, you know, in the evening, there'll be processing material, so that's very exciting. The facility, the state-of-the-art facility, it's going to have the latest and greatest technology. It's going to be the most high-tech processing facility in the state of Michigan, among the highest-tech facilities in the country. We have the capacity to process 220 tons per hour. So we're expecting to generate an awful lot of volume for that facility. And with that, we'll be opening our drop-off center for regular recyclables along that same timeline. So we would expect probably about the end of March, maybe early April, but more likely that third, third, fourth week of March, we'll set the containers back out and announce to the public that they can resume using our site for their recycling.
How about styrofoam?
We are not planning on resuming taking styrofoam for a variety of reasons. One of which is...
It's a shame.
It is a shame, but I tell you, we get no money for it. And we put a ton of labor into it. And the biggest problem that we have with it, or two, two big problems. One is it contaminates the rest of the materials. And so it degrades the value of the material that we're trying to sell. But perhaps just as importantly is because we're on eight mile, because we are in the center of it all, we get people coming from all over the metropolitan area, oftentimes from outside of our communities, bringing us that material 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And if our containers are full, they show up on a Sunday because we have, we've been, you know, closed over the weekend. It's all over the ground. And now we're in ordinance violation with the city for litter. We don't want to be a bad neighbor, we don't want to have litter. And frankly, you know, what we've been telling people is that to limit their use of styrofoam and expand polystyrofoam, polystyrene as best as possible because when you're driving somewhere to take it to get recycled, you very well may be offsetting the environmental impact you're having by recycling it as opposed to just throwing it in regular trash. And so there's that double-edged sword. And so between the cost issue, the litter issue, the no revenue issue, it's just not a good way to run that railroad. So we're very, very unlikely to resume taking it unless the markets change, unless the one outlet in the state, our container, comes to us and says, hey, we will do it and we'll make it work for you. But they haven't done that in the past, and I don't see them doing that in the other sites. And so it's a very problematic material. And we don't want that to overshadow the, the site and, you know, diminish our opportunity to collect those materials that are, the lion's share of the materials that people want to recycle, either through glass, plastic, metal, paper.
Thank you for that. And I did read the background on the proposal. And I am aware that it's supposed to be seamless continuation of the trash collection that we currently receive from Waste Management. I asked because I wanted on the record that the representative from Rizzo is guaranteeing us the same level of service that we have from Waste Management.
Mr. Raywell.
And that's why, in our proposal, we give you all of our references. So you can, you know, we don't want to just put in the few that we think you should call. We put all 44 of them in here, and, you know, pick them out, ask them how we do. They should, they should tell you. And I believe, Mike, you've talked to several of them, and the service will be outstanding.
Did it?
Thank you.
Mr. Raywell.
So little questions. Are we only proposing one size recyclable cart?
We, at this time, the default size is going to be the 64-gallon cart. We can work with the contractor, and we've built into the contract the ability to specify alternate sizes for those homeowners that want a different size. Our experience has been that by and large, people gravitate towards this size because this turns out to be the perfect size. In some of our communities, we found that there are a handful of people that would want a larger one because they have a larger family. And there are some people that would want a smaller one because they don't generate as that much, that many recyclables. This seems to be the perfect size because if you fill it up, you set out every week. But if you don't fill it up, you don't have to set out every week. You set it out on as-needed basis. Then you'll find a rare homeowner that may be able to fill this up more than once a week, and they'll, they'll need a larger cart. But we intend to work with the homeowners and the hauler and the Department of Public Works to make sure that, you know, we get the right size to the right people. Our experience was really interesting when we rolled out carts, and this is an aside, but it's sort of illustrious, that we hadn't experienced when we rolled out carts in some of our other communities four years ago now, that when you give people a choice to select ahead of time, they're not necessarily sure what size they need. And they'll look and they'll say, that's too big, that's too small. And they'll pick a size, and then two weeks later or two months later, they'll be calling back for a different-sized cart. And we found that when you give residents that choice upfront, there's a lot of back and forth, and it creates this logistical nightmare. One of our cities opted for the approach where they said, everybody's going to get this cart. We're going to make them use it for two months. And if after two months it's not the right size, they can call us and we'll give them a different-sized cart. And you can count on your thumbs the number of people that called saying they want a different-sized cart. Because it turns out, this is the sweet spot for carts on weekly collection. If you were every other week collecting, you'd want a bigger cart, but you generally not. Now, some homes, you know, they may just not have the space for a cart like this, and they may still want a cart, they may make a 35-gallon size, which is more traditional trash can size. And then again, because we're an opt-in basis, we're not forcing big carts on anybody. There are going to be those homeowners that just don't want a cart. They want, they may not want to recycle, or they may be perfectly content with their, their bin. And then the issue of where are they going to put it? If they can't fit it in the garage, they can't get it behind the house. You know, those homeowners just may not want a cart. And so the opt-in approach really works well in that regard. It gives homeowners the choice to do what works best for them. And I will say, while I'm rambling on, for those homeowners that opt in for a cart, they can keep their bin. They can continue to keep the bin at home, store kindling in it, sporting goods, gardening tools, whatever the case may be. They can take it up north, they can flip it over if they're kids dormant and use it for a TV stand. Or they can throw, or they can throw it in the cart and it'll get recycled. So there are options. And one, what we've seen in some communities, Farmington Hills being a good example, the homeowners also worked with their children's classrooms and donated them the classrooms so they could use those bins in the classroom for recycling in the school. Now, that would be up to the individual district and obviously the individual building, whether or not that's a viable approach. But it's something that's been done and done well.
That was actually one of my questions, what do you do with your old cart? If you, or your old bin, you got new carts, do you want to do that? With the contract, we currently have a 32-gallon trash can limit. Will we have that same limit, or will some residents start using larger cans?
No, we're still going to use the same-sized trash can. And that's for practical reasons, because these trashcans are picked up manually. And it's one thing for the homeowner to pick up one trashcan or two or three trashcans and drag it for curb, but if you're the garbage truck driver that has to pick up 600 of them in one day, you really have to have some reasonable limitation on the size and weight of those trashcans. So it's a 32-gallon size, 60-pound limit, that's what your contract specification has been for years, and that's what it continues to be. You'll find fewer people will actually use a trashcan and will go to just a small bag of trash if they start using these instead of their bins. We found that in many communities, when they go to the carts, what you see instead of big trashcans and little recycling carts, you start to see larger recycling carts and little bags of trash, because a lot of what's going in our trashcans now actually could go in our bins, is their bins are already full, and so the rest goes in the trashcan.
So would that mean that if someone needed a second cart, they can get one?
Generally, that's something that we would have to negotiate in the home contract, but I'm sure Mr. Breder will say yes. Because the alternative is, you know, that same homeowner could set out five or six recycling bins, and then that's more work for the driver than just a couple of carts. So that's something we'll have to work out. But as a general rule, most people on weekly collection, one 64-gallon cart is going to meet all their needs.
We have a lot of communities that people request a second cart. We've accommodated a great amount, there's a cost tag on it.
You mentioned that you sell a lot of recycling materials. Is there any payback to the city or reduced fee based on how much you sell of the recycling material?
Yes, there's a whole formula that we use, based on our private operator pays us, based on the value of commodities, and then the amount of materials that come in, and the city gets a share that's allocated on an annual basis by our board of directors, of which Mr. Zorn is the chairman, by the way. Now, I will tell you, in this current commodities market, there is no revenue from the sales of materials, commodity markets are extirpated. The commodity markets are actually worse than they were in '08, '09. But that'll change, because what goes up comes down, and what goes down goes up. But yeah, there's a mechanism built into our operating agreement with our operator, and then built into the, what we call the MRF Service Agreement, which is the service agreement that we have with the city that mirrors our agreement with our operator. And that's the agreement by which the city directs its hauler through its contract, which is considering this evening, to bring the materials to us. So yes, that's along the way, so there's a revenue-sharing provision.
Next question, I don't know if it's for you or for our administration. Recycling in parks, is that done through what the Parks and Rec Department, that they pick up the trash? And is it possible to add, would that go into consideration in the contract?
The answer is yes. And right now, Parks and Rec does pick up the garbage in every park. We would have them picking it up and taking it to location properties and public works or if we would introduce recycle containers within the parks.
And if I could add to that, you do, some of your city facilities have recycling already. I think, last time I recall, there was recycling containers over at the tennis courts. And so in that case, your facilities' staff, they collect that material. And in the past, they had been bringing it down to our location, they'd never be using the drop-off because it's convenient there. Now, for the past few years, that hasn't been available, but beginning in March, it will be available again. So your city staff has been in the practice of recycling in some of the city facilities. And this contract does have provisions in that, pricing in it, for to hand some of that off to the contract here, if it makes more sense from a resource utilization standpoint.
The other question was, you mentioned Waste Management had an alternate one, so option one, what was that alternate that didn't include recycling carts?
It was continue the exact same service that you have now. Just continue to use the bin, continue to use, everything stays the same. And what I found really sort of telling was that that proposal, to keep everything as it is now, was still more expensive than Rizzo's proposal to incorporate the enhancement to the use of recycling carts.
Why is Rizzo so much cheaper?
There's a variety of reasons. One is just simply economies of scale, they become the dominant hauler here in southeast Michigan, so they have economies of scale at disposal. The other aspect of that simply is, you know, if you're dealing with a regional hauler versus a, you know, a $13 billion a year corporation based in Texas, there are other layers of costs built into their business model that Rizzo just doesn't experience.
Can I have a couple, three questions? One is, can you explain that rewards system again? So I recycle, and I contact Rizzo and say, I've recycled.
Yeah, it's actually a login system. You wouldn't contact Rizzo directly, but you'd contact an online system, a rewards recycling system. And you'd set up an account, and you'd log in, and you'd report that you've recycled. And then through that activity, there are coupons and discounts that are made available to you. Primarily, they're, and Don can correct me if I'm wrong, or Mary Jo, but they're online coupons that you can print off based on the fact that you indicate that you recycle. Now, the early iterations of that system were, you measure if somebody's recycling, they're onboard scales, and you're tracking what each individual home is doing. That becomes pretty burdensome from an equipment and data management standpoint, and a bit intrusive to the homeowner, because not everybody wants to know exactly how much is getting set out the curb and adding that track by some third-party private company. In this case, it's quite a bit different. You're just going to log in, and you'll indicate that you've recycled, and then those rewards become available. And they're a combination typically of both local and national merchants that make those coupons available. And I don't know, Don, you want to add anything to that?
What rewards will do is they'll canvas the businesses in and around Sterling, Southfield, and they will try to get as many businesses in the city to participate in the rewards program, because most people shop within the area that they live in. So they'll have, they'll have local businesses, and then they'll have national retailers in there too. So they try to get a mix, but they try to get around 30% of local businesses in. And there is, there is a toll-free number to, for somebody that may not have a computer, they can call that number, and the rewards people will take care of that and bill it wherever they come.
Okay. I think you mentioned that you will know what percentage of our residents do recycle on a day-to-day basis?
Yes.
How does that, how do you get that data?
From the hauler. And we currently get that from Waste Management. On a monthly basis, they report to us the percentage of homes on any given route day that had their recycling bin set out. But frankly, it's less than we would like in Southfield currently, it's about 35 to 40%. That's a little on the low side, but truthfully, you know, we haven't had a mass bin distribution or a mass promotion of recycling in Southfield for a number of years. And you get people that move into a home and find out that, you know, they're coming from a community that did recycle, and if that prior homeowner took the recycling bin with them, they don't know what they don't know. They don't even know that they're missing a recycling bin until somewhere down the road. And so by engaging in outreach and education program, and a new effort to let people know that they can get a banner, that they can get a cart, it'll increase the number of people that will be recycling, and I'm sure we'll see a dramatic increase. But we get that directly from the hauler, because they report to us currently, Waste Management does it, and Rizzo will do the same thing. I get a monthly report that says on Monday, February 22nd, 35% of the homes had, and I actually get the wrong numbers, but as well as the percentage, 35% of the homes had their recycling bin set out. And we get that throughout the entire month, for each month, and we track that in addition to the actual volumes of material. So I can tell you, you know, how many tons of material were recycled by Southfield residents for the month. And I know how many homes had recycling bins set out at the same time, and we'll track that over time.
Do you share that with us?
Yes.
Because I think that would be an ideal marketing thing, a PR thing for our community relations people to set out, you know, if we want to increase the recycling, that would be a, to have that data would be, would be really helpful.
In fact, you know, Mr. Manning and I have been having conversations, because this P2 grant that we got to do this outreach education work in Southfield speaks specifically to that. What we, what we told the state was, if you give us money to do direct mail and outreach education in Southfield and visit with homeowner associations, we know just by having that communication with them, that we will be able to increase the amount of recycling that takes place in the city. And they gave us $8,200 to do that. And so we were working with Mike to identify homeowner associations and to, you know, craft the messaging that's going to go out. And we've been holding off on doing that specifically for this reason, because we don't want to tell everybody, here's how you get a bin, if somewhere in the near future, the council's going to make the good decision to say, let's let them choose a cart as well. And so very soon, down the road, we'll be able to do this outreach education piece. And you're absolutely right, it's about communication with the homeowners to let them know why they should recycle, how they should recycle, and how to get the receptacle, whether it's a bin or cart that best meets their needs.
Right. Now, that, just from this distance, that bin seems, kind of have, the cart seems fairly heavy. When I say heavy, my concern is, in my neighborhood, if it's a little windy, driving down the street is almost like a, you know, you have to go weave in and out of bins and barrels and trashcans that have flown out into the middle of the street. And there are a lot of times when I've stopped on a number of occasions and put them back up in the yards, only to look in my rear-view mirror and see it back out in the, back out in the street again when the wind's blowing. What's the track record on these?
He would blow this over if we had a day like we did the other day, where the winds were 55, 60 miles an hour. But we very rarely have a problem with carts being, they're not going, and almost never happens.
Okay. And I think part of the, part of the concern is the design of cart. You know, some people put out roundwoods, which are easy to roll up. But it seems like there are times when the trash hauler, the people, don't put the bins far enough up in the yard, that it's almost inviting for the first gust of wind to blow it out in the street.
They should stand up the back of the curb, off, you know, off the road, back of the curb.
Okay. I hope that's, your standard procedure is to make sure that it's back away, back far enough from the curb that at least it has an opportunity to stay there.
We try not to block driveways, mailboxes, and if there are any ditches, we want to make sure they don't end up in the ditch. So when they place them, they'll place them back up on the curb.
Couple of observations, you know, relative to these, one is they are heavier than your standard trashcan, so they're less likely to blow around the neighborhood. And even though they're heavier, because they have wheels, the mobility is actually greater. The other thing that we like about these is they have the lid. So on a windy day like last Friday, you know, if someone set their recycling bin out with no lid, there's probably stuff blowing around the neighborhood. That's not going to happen with these because of this lid. The other aspect that's built into the contract is, the contractor has maintenance replacement responsibility for these carts. These are going to be carts that they have to take care of. So it's in their driver's best interest and their company's best interest to make sure they are properly placed back after they've emptied them, so as, that they don't get damaged. And because they know that there's going to be costs associated with every time they don't take care of these properly.
Okay. And the last question I have, I shared with a friend, and maybe it's the fact that I was looking out the window in fourth grade when I was, when teachers were trying to teach me math. When I did the calculation, and it's in the bid spec, it says, if we accept an eight-year bid, an eight-year lease or contract to me, that there will be no increase in the last three years from the first five years. But if I take the total of the first five years, divide it by five, and multiply it by eight, it's less than the number that's on the bid spec for an eight-year contract.
Right. Because what's, the numbers that I gave you include not just the aggregate cost for the homeowner curbside service component of the contract, but also the curbside, excuse me, the municipal facility services. So for the DPW roll-off containers, the DPW recycling, and the trash from City Hall and the court, and all the different facilities that the city has for which they're responsible for disposing of trash or recycling. Those are all part of that aggregate price that I had before you, because I wanted you to get the big-picture view. And those prices do change over time based on the CPI. So what you have in the bid package is a single price for the curbside component, in this case, it's $127 per household per year, for just the curbside component. Plus, you'll have built into your overall pricing, any costs for the chipping services for the homeowners, plus, which that number changes over time based on the CPI, plus all the costs associated with the municipal facilities, again, which change over time. So if you, if you try to, you're not going to be able to look at the numbers and divide them out and know that that's the exact number, because it does have some flat pricing, plus some pricing that changes over time. What we try to do is show you on a historical basis, over a five-year period or an eight-year period, what your costs would be and how that compared between those companies that proposed to do the services of the community. The one difference that you'll find in the proposal from Rizzo that wasn't in the others is, for that residential component, they have, the first five years, that residential cost remains the same, whereas in all the other haulers, it went up between 1 and 1.5% a year. So you'll keep a flat price for that particular aspect, which is the lion's share of your costs. You'll keep a flat price with no cost increases for that first five years. If you enter into the contract, where it's a five-year contract plus one three-year extension, you'll see about a 3.95% increase in that residential component in year six, and then it's the same 6, 7, you know, 6, 7, 8, that pricing stays flat again. What Rizzo has proposed is, if you, instead of going into a five- and a three-year contract for a total of eight, if you enter into what we call a straight eight, one eight-year contract for the entire term, that doesn't include the extension provision, but instead, those three years are built into the entire deal, your residential component will stay at that flat 127 for the entire eight years. So in year six, you won't see a 4% increase for that, nearly 4% increase for that one component. I hope that explains it.
I understand exactly what you said, but for me, if you tell me in writing that it's not going to change, the five years, if we do five years, it's one price, if we do five years plus three, three years, there's an increase in the price for the last three years, or if we do a straight eight, nothing, nothing changes. I'm going to believe that, but it does change. So you're, you're saying one thing in writing, but doing something else in math?
Yeah, I'd have to look. I thought I wrote it out so that when I say nothing changed, I'm talking only of the residential, the basic curbside service, the trash, recycling, the yard waste collection. Maybe, maybe I wasn't clear enough in what I put in writing.
I'll be perfectly willing to accept the page two, that second from the last paragraph.
Correct? It's on page two, second from the last paragraph.
Yeah, when I mentioned that second last paragraph, I was referring to the constant price for the residential service component, which is separate from the municipal services pricing schedule, which involves the add-on services of what the city currently avails itself through Waste Management. So there's two different price schedules in there. So the residential service component is flat for five years with a 4% increase in year six, or flat for the entire eight years. The other pricing, which is a completely different price schedule, it gives prices for things like 40-yard roll-offs and 60-yard dumpsters and trashcans and so on and so forth for city facilities, and including our embrace for special services like the brush chip. Those do change over time, but are limited, as is your current contract, to the consumer price index.
Okay.
And I will add too, if I may, that the pricing schedule that you have for, from Rizzo, for those for those additional, what we call municipal services and other services, is less than your current pay.
I understand, I understand. And it's just that I was not aware that there was something else added into the last three years. Because if you're going to charge for the municipal and all that, it seems like you'd be charging that in the first five years too.
Oh, it's there, it's in both, it's in both, in my tables, it's in both, it's in both. So if you look, if you look at, if you were to look at, pull that table, if you go to table...
Well, I guess I wasn't aware that there was another ingredient that caused an inflation in the price, the CPI or whatever, whatever it is, that was, I didn't read that in the write-up.
Yeah, and I failed to get that specific in this particular, it's built in the RFP, and it mirrors what you have in your existing contract and what was in the RFP. There's basically two ingredients, it's the, what we see every day out on the street in terms of the trash truck, recycling truck, the yard waste truck, and then there's all those, that suite of other services of which the city avails itself, of, you know, picking up the trash.
Yeah, I understand.
Different facilities.
Okay, are there any other questions, Mr. Madalom?
Two more questions. I know this comes up every so often about meat pickup. Would it still be in the bags, or can it be raked into the, into the street and then sucked up?
You do not want to do the latter for a variety of reasons. One is cost, it's enormously expensive. The haulers typically don't do that. What you'd have to do is you'd have to buy a few quarter to three-hundred-thousand-dollar back trucks, and then hire some people to drive them around the city streets. And then you still wouldn't be able to do it in all the city streets because it only works in the community where you have all curb and gutter. You can't do that in communities that have a lot of their road with open ditches. You'll be caught in culvers, you'll create flooding problems, it's an absolute nightmare, and it's extraordinarily costly. And then many, you know, many areas of the city, they don't have the types of tree and leaf fall that would require that anyway. And so you'd be embedding a lot of extra cost into your overall service set that doesn't really, isn't a service that everybody would need. We highly recommend against that.
And the other question is, because we're going to have these potentially sixty-four-gallon recycling carts, what would stop a resident from picking a bin and moving to a larger garbage can? Because they may say, hey, they can take the bigger recycling can, is that part of your outreach?
Yeah, yeah, that actually is, yes. It's part of what we do when we talk to people about this, when we move the press releases, and when we do, you know, information on our website and our social media, and when we go to talk with the homeowner associations, that's exactly what we'll be saying, is that, you know, everything stays the same except for this. And you'll probably see a different color truck coming down from your house, but the routes will stay the same, the collection day will stay the same, the trash container size will stay the same, the yard waste collection program stays the same. The only thing, the only thing that really changes is you'll see an opportunity to increase your recycling.
So it's actually a little sticker on top, does it say, does it have the recycling symbol on the side or anything like that?
Yes, it does. Yeah, they come in different various forms, this is recycling only, and then you'll see on this one, there's a label on what, this is a little bit different than what we have on ours, because this isn't exactly right, but what we'll have, something similar to this, again, that identifies exactly what goes in here. And then again, the current public face number, so if they have any questions or problems, they know who to call right away.
Mr. Madalom?
Mr. President, I, the Finance Committee talked to Mike and walked this contract through. We asked a ton of questions, in addition to what we have to ask tonight, which is more in-depth. And, you know, protocol is named, it looks like we make a motion if we accept this.
Well, we're going to put it on our agenda for the 29th.
But if we could get a consensus as to the write-up, because right now, our recommendation was to move forward with table one and to five with three-year extension. That was the recommendation, Finance Committee.
Five years with three years?
Yes.
The eight-year.
The eight-year, yeah, okay.
Five years.
Okay, I was going to say, it did make a lot of sense, I was going to come to the Finance Committee meeting. Do a five-year plus three-year. Okay, but before we take a consensus, the mayor has...
Mike, when your center reopened, the recycling center, I don't know if anybody else would be interested in touring the new center and if you'd like to extend an invitation to the council as a demonstration to come down?
Yeah, we intend to do that. We think it's a big deal that we're going to be back up and running, and we really want you to come and take a look at it. So we haven't figured out exactly how and when we're going to do that, but we definitely know that we are going to invite everybody in the community to come and take a look.
Thank you.
You don't have to serve lunch. Let's take a consensus, do you want to move this on to the, our 29th meeting, Mr. Madalom?
Are we proposing the full eight years?
Full eight years.
Yes.
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 Yes, okay, see you on the 29th. Hopefully, we won't have any questions, but can't guarantee it.
And we'll, the actual, this savings is a substantial number. And we'll have, we'll have that, you were real close, this happened, my number was reported, we'll have that, but it's a number dinner for two at modest restaurants.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is Propo- or just amendment for general building regulations, Ms. Ward?
Well, you, I can start this off, I know that Mr. Pilot and Mr. Gadda have a... Oh, correct? Okay, so, you've noticed, probably in the last few months, we've been doing quite a few cleanup of building-related ordinances. This is another one, chapter 102, as with chapter 100 with the housing code. Chapter 102 incorporates the BOKA codes, which are now obsolete. So the general purpose here of updating chapter 102 is to bring it into accordance now with the Michigan's building code. So with that, I'll defer to Mark in a minute.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, President and Council members. Basically, as Ms. Ward stated, we are going to be amending our chapter to coincide with the State of Michigan building codes, to reflect the plumbing, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing codes, and have a uniform code with no changes. We've eliminated all the changes in this ordinance so that we reflect the State of Michigan building code. We have updated the bond receipts that we take in for projects, which is archaic, it's over ten, twelve years old. We've upgraded those because we recover some of those bonds. And if someone fails to get an inspection properly, or they need to pay for an extra inspection, we can take those monies from the bonds. And then we have streamlined the boards of appeals. We used to have a electrical board of appeals, a plumbing board of appeals, a mechanical board of appeals, and a building board of appeals. We consolidated, consolidated all of those into a singular board. Basically, that's it.
And then within the singular board, there will be individuals that will have expertise in plumbing, in electrical, and in mechanical. So that that single board now will have the experts from each one of those areas, instead of having a singular board with not only the experts, but multiple other people on it. So the board will be comprised of experts in each one of the fields, but it will just be in one board.
Remember, that board only means when somebody files an appeal, which you had four boards, and the number of appeals was pretty infrequent. So we think that it makes sense just to have the singular board, and they can respond to any appeal, which again, you don't get a substantive number of those.
Okay, any questions, Ms. Seymour?
Now, why, so BOKA has become obsolete?
Correct.
And why is Michigan dating BOKA?
BOKA stopped in 1999. In 1999 and 2000, all of the codes nationally formed a singular code, the international code. And the state, every three to six years, uses that code and makes changes to that code. And the state dictates to everyone with, every community within the state, that they have to use that code. BOKA's obsolete.
And since when, since when did that change? Because I might remind you, we've called quite many of these.
Correct, that stopped in 2000. In 2000, we went to the international code and a state code.
And because BOKA seems to be not current, or how things were done, is that what it is?
No, all of the codes, there was a Southern Building Code, the National, the Uniform Building Code, and the BOKA Code. There was multiple codes throughout the country. And it became confusing for developers, moving from one state to another state, large developers, on what code they had used. So the codes formulated all together to develop a singular code in 2000. Now it's called the international code, and that's throughout the country, throughout the United States, and also internationally.
So that's what we're going to be adopting?
We have always adopted it, we had to clean up these ordinances. We had to clean up our changes.
That is correct, we're kind of like formalized, we're just making sure that the ordinances reflect what you're supposed to do.
Well, it sounds like we were doing a little bit of this, a little bit of that, and a little bit of something else.
Correct, we cleaned it all up.
Okay, so now is...
It's a uniform code, whatever the State of Michigan says we have to adopt, we do.
But is that going to be across the United States or just...
Across the United States.
Well, that makes sense.
Internationally, actually, the United States, Canada, Mexico.
So climate doesn't have anything to do with...
Yes, that's all addressed in the code.
So there are those regional changes, so like for the State of Michigan, that's why the state goes in and takes the international code, and then does some editing for it to take into consideration those regional differences.
That's it?
Yep.
Mr. Madalom?
The construction board of appeals, that's going to be listed in this chapter, because we're revising it, automatically nullifies the current boards that we have, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then, just out of curiosity, it says here that the construction board shall elect a chairperson, secretary, and treasurer every year. What would be the function of treasurer on this construction board?
This is the verbiage out of the states, we use the verbiage directly from the state. I don't know that they need a treasurer, but...
Sometimes it's fine, provide the treasurer steps in if one of the other officers aren't there, so it's kind of an alternate officer, so...
That's it?
Just to point out, the last time the plumbing board of appeals met was over an issue when they were constructing the Starview. It has not met since the 90s.
So what part of the plumbing also...
They didn't have appeal, plumbing, so, you know, when I was boards and commission chair, I tried to fill that commission with plumbers, and it was pointless.
I remember, but I remember that.
They never met? Right, that's...
You were talking about that last week.
Yeah, that's why you're chairing it now, so it's good to know.
Any other questions? You're still going to have five people on the board.
Correct.
And in here, it identifies the kind of skills that each one of them has to have, like an architect and...
Engineer, a mechanical engineer.
Okay, all right. Is there...
I do have a question, you mentioned this new board, and there's going to be one of each specialty or close to it. Is that enough? I mean, what happens if there's a disagreement?
There's five people.
Five people, but they're all different specialties?
Hopefully, I think the intent, even the way that the Michigan law is, is that the person whose specialty is the subject of the appeal would probably be able to explain the issue sufficient so that the other persons, even though they, for example, are not a plumber, and it's a plumbing appeal, would have a good enough basis to be able to make a determination.
I mean, that's, if you only have one person that really understands that specialty, they have to make, the committee estimate it for sale.
That's true, that's true. By majority vote, right?
We do it all the time.
We're not dealing with life without matters, if somebody's saying their life, you know, seriously.
Yeah, if either Sue or Stan could just touch on the bonds and the deposits. And council will recall that the last year, great deal of effort by the department has been put in cleaning up outstanding bonds. But this does also close some of the loopholes there.
It does, I mean, what we did with, when the ordinance on the old bonds was done probably about two years ago, so that we then went back to all of the old bonds that the city maintained, I think we got back into the 80s or so.
Went back into the 70s.
We went way back, and if we couldn't find the owner, that was a cheat to the state, but we went through an analysis of each one of those bonds, looked at our administrative expenses for trying to find the owner, trying to notify, took off an amount for that, and on a lot of them, they were, you know, fifty, a hundred-dollar bonds, we were able to just forfeit them. Going forward now, we say, if you don't comply with the terms of your permit, within the 180 days or an extension, if that's granted, your bond is forfeited. So we know in the future, these bonds will just be routinely forfeited if nobody does what they're supposed to.
We returned, we captured well over a million, but we returned millions to the state of issue.
Right, because we couldn't find...
So this loophole is, 180 days permits invalid, the money is captured by the city.
Right.
And we utilize those funds quite often. If a contractor has to have a reinspection he doesn't pay, we'll take the monies out of that fund. And we had to increase those amounts because we weren't recouping the monies for the inspections.
Okay, is there a question?
Sue, is there any conflict with city charter? Isn't there something there about having a field person?
No, I, there was nothing in there about each of these, you talked about each of these boards, the old respective boards, so I didn't find anything in there about these, these were not charter-based. I think they probably originally came from BOKA, I would think.
They did sound from BOKA, right?
Clay Bieber used to be another BOKA board.
Sure, sure.
I just don't have a charter, I just wanted to make sure.
You know, one of the tenants in here is that, they have to, I like a chairperson at the beginning of every year.
Correct.
And when I read that, it made me stop and think about the other boards and commissions that change their chairpeople periodically. And I don't think there's any communication between the individual boards and commissions and the council board and commission subcommittee to let us know who is the chairperson. So if there's any kind of contact, we know who to get to. And maybe we need to work on that and see if we can find a way to get that communication back to the council, so...
But at the same time, they don't meet that frequently, I mean, they never have a first meeting.
That's true. First time they have one, could be the last time.
Yeah, but for the other boards and commissioners, well, I guess it's in calendar though, isn't it?
And it could change too, I mean, after a whole year.
Yeah, that's right, so, are there any other questions? I do have one minor, it's a title, that's on the parking lot repaving...
Yeah, the $150...
The $150, yeah, they had to return instead of...
Yeah, yeah, I got that on here, right, I'll make that for Monday.
Okay, all right, other than that, we'll have it on agenda for Monday, okay?
Thank you.
Next item?
Are we going out of one meeting and into another?
Pardon me?
Are we going out of one meeting and into another?
Yes, we're going to go out of one meeting and into the second.
So you're going to formally close the six o'clock and then open the seven? Even though we're following the agenda?
Yes, we're adjourning the meeting, we'll just close the meeting and then open the...
You're all into the seven?
Yes, and we'll have another one. All right. I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting conducted as a committee of the whole for February the 22nd, 2016. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Yes, thank you. Councilman Wrightwell.
Yeah.
Councilman Protasey.
Here.
Councilman Cruz.
Here.
Councilwoman Morris?
Here.
Councilman Nagelbaum?
Here.
Councilwoman Seymour? Council President Fraser?
Here.
Except members present.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is the second quarter budget adjustment. Mr. City Administrator, you want to...
Yeah, Mr. President, at the February 12th, 2016, the Finance Committee recommended adoption of the proposed second quarter adjustment. Lynn Roberts, our Director of Fiscal Services, is here to answer any questions. The item will be presented as a consent item on at the February 29th meeting. If agreed, good luck.
Mr. Roberts, would you like to take the stage?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to discuss and present the second quarter budget adjustment, which takes into account activities pretty much through December 31st of 15, but also acknowledge some other activities that have happened since that time. So, in your packet, there is a summary of the description, and we can just go through each one if you don't mind. And if there are any questions, you can, what's your preference, Mr. Chair? Wait until the end, or do you want them as we go?
I can do it either way. Which would you feel most comfortable with?
I can take the questions as I go.
Okay.
Okay. So, there are a series of four adjustments that we're going to discuss. The first one is during the course of last budget year, we projected a certain amount for legal fees, and there's a need to increase the amount needed for legal fees primarily because of the tax tribunal fees need to be, or not tax tribunal fees, tax tribunal cases are being litigated by outside counsel, being assessed by outside counsel. And so, we need to increase that by $150,000. The adjustment will come from the contingency account. And just for the sake of history, in the contingency account for the budget year for fiscal 16, there was about $1.2 million that was set aside for contingencies such as this. It was noted that we would come back to council if we would need to make any adjustments that would require the use of contingency funds. So, this first one is one of those such requests. Okay? The second budget adjustment is to cover several unfunded positions that during the course of this year have been decided that need to be funded for various reasons. And so, those positions, I'll list the positions one by one and try my best to give a description of the need for those positions. The first one is a payroll specialist in the accounting department. The payroll specialist retired a few years ago and has been able to come back and assist us with payroll processing. But there is a need to obtain a new full-time person for that position, and so we need to fund that position. There's a need for a writer in the Community Relations Department to assist with some of our writing and media activity. A building official, a management position for a building official is being requested. And one of the things I would like to point out is that we did adopt a new fee structure for the Buildings Department. And we do believe that as a result of increasing those fees for those services, that we will have more than sufficient funds to cover the costs of that position. Another one is a development services counter technician as part of zoning, and also a director of Parks and Recreation. There is a posting out for, to permanently fill the Parks and Rec Director position, and so that could be either filled internally or externally. So, the total cost for the budget adjustments is $250,000. And this is going to be prorated over the fourth quarter of the fiscal year. This is definitely not the total amount that will be included in the fiscal 17 budget. But $200,000 will come from the general funds contingency. And there is also a need for a $50,000 adjustment on the Parks and Recreation Fund balance, since those funds will be coming from Parks and Rec for the Parks and Rec Director position. Okay? The third item is to, relates to the property across the street on Evergreen Road. Hamilton Anderson was recently contracted to provide, to be the contract, the project consultant to assist with the development activities for that property. And when we adopted the, when the contract was approved, we did not necessarily, or there was not a direct description of where those funds would be charged from, so we need about $100,000 from the tax-based initiative reserve. That is going to be a part of the fund balance that was designated at the end of fiscal year 15 in our comprehensive annual audit report. And the amount, just for the sake of disclosing, in that tax-based initiative fund is about $8.25 million. The final budget adjustment is for Northland. We had some purchase costs that are, that exist, as well as some carry costs that are needed for the maintenance of this property until it's prepared for development. And those are described on the filing sheet that says the Northland proposed budget. So, there are acquisition costs of about $4.2 million. The carry costs are $620,000. And then there's the one-time costs, which will include preparing the mini-station to become operable, and as well as fencing, and some other costs will be about $300,000. And then the planning consultant team is projected to be $300,000. So, the total cost for the Northland budget adjustment is $5.42 million. Any questions?
Mr. Figgas?
The, we're looking at one, for example, the last sentence. More sufficient funds in the contingency account to cover these expenses. And that is taken out. How do we account for, let us know about the balances of these funds? I mean, where did, you know, in other words, moving money but not knowing what's left is a problem to me. And somehow, you know, and even when we're talking about the Northland budget, being real with this budget for the Northland ought to, in some way, be put somewhere in some document that causes it to turn down. In other words, you know, when you're talking about, for example, balances tax-based initiatives reserve is eight million, and then balance after the budget adjustment, three and four will be two million, seven. What other things are going to be needed in 16, 17 are the same, are the same funds? In other words, I, you know, I'm worried about money. Well, it's sad to say, but I am. I, we're moving money, but also there's money that's not being moved that's going to have to be paid somewhere. And that really bothers me as we're, when are all these funds and how, you know, I guess that was the biggest problem with the audit that I, that we just went through. You know, to me, audit is, is looking at the position of the city, but, you know, I think that there weren't enough red flags up in the audit. In other words, where were we, where were we? In other words, when you go through the audit itself, there's numbers, there's a decrease from so-and-so, it's a decrease from so-and-so. I was talking about going through that audit differently than just a PowerPoint.
And...
And I'm very concerned about, when they say there was this much in there before and here, I just am concerned about how much money we have in case of an emergency.
Mr. Chair, in the, the $8.4 million is the amount, usually what happens each year as we go through the end of the audit, we'll do an assessment and say, okay, what expenditures were outside of the normal operating budget but were designated to be spent under a certain, under a certain purpose. And so, from this, what we did was we took the audited numbers, the audited designation of 8.42. And so, what I'm proposing here is that, taking into consideration what those budget, what these two budget adjustments would do against the tax-based initiatives reserves, that would leave us with a balance. So, I think that as, I believe all of the designations that are there typically come through a, either the normal budget process or come through as a budget adjustment. So, I don't believe that there is, outside of those two parameters, ultimately, they would both have to be addressed by council.
Give me another example. We had, I think it was four million set aside for appeals, for assessing department limit force, somewhere in that area, and we came up short.
This was bad?
Pardon?
That was, this was the error?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, put more money, pay up more money due to assessments. So...
But that number for tax appeals, let me please. That number, there's $2 million in the reserved account for tax appeals. We're not, this has nothing to do with that? However, that number is derived by a number that the auditors and our assessing unit agree to mutually. You were correct a few years ago, that number was greater than had been previously budgeted. And that's probably four or five years ago that we missed that target? But since then, the auditors, the assessors sit down, we look at the outstanding tax appeals and the amount to sit in that reserve. The tax-based initiative fund does not, it has nothing to do with the checks we will have to cut to paying outstanding tax appeals. The one item that we are budgeting for is a legal fee to pay the cost associated with fighting those tax appeals. And I will tell you, the Strategy Council embarked on a few years ago in getting buildings built up, the number of appeals has dramatically decreased. As the building occupant, as the buildings have greater occupancy, the wind is truly cut out of their sails on their tax appeals. And we're seeing that number decrease to where that actually freed up some money in our reserves.
Yeah, I understand that. But what I'm trying to say is, I look at things in my mind when you, when you say, you know, we're spending money, and then you look at, well, you're going to get new revenues to do business next year, and then instead of, what is it, 1.47, now we get three tenths of to recapture. And then we went through and the previous assessor didn't sign off on these appeals. I mean, my mind is going wacko, seriously, on where we're sitting financially. And I know that we come out of the recession, we are solid, I guess we still have a double A rating. I just, I just am very concerned about knowing what, and maybe we'll get through the budget that way and see how these funds are, and, I mean, we're looking at, next is a $10, $12 million to tear down Northland, all right?
And that number, we always knew. I mean, these numbers, we sat in this room.
They were talking about big things with the state.
We talked about purchase and carry costs. It's funny, the, without even having the numbers last spring, the carry costs are pretty true to what we had estimated, 40 to 60. Since then, we've already reduced the security cost in half. We're making some moves where the electrical, we know is running 20,000 a month, we're working to cut that in half with the work that we're doing in reducing the number of transformers. So, that number, we worked to get it smaller. The number doesn't recognize the revenues we receive in CAMs. We haven't booked the revenues. And later on, we'll be talking about a potential, another short-term revenue. When we also discussed this, we also discussed that the LRF, our Local Improvement Revolving Loan Fund, would loan the Brownfield Authority the money to do that. There's 16, little over 16 million sitting in that account. That was money that was, never came from taxpayer money. That was money earned from the 80s on interest, loaning money to ourselves when interest rates were double digits. So, again, the Brownfield Authority will loan the money, the LRF will loan the money to the Brownfield Authority, will probably charge them 6%, 6.5% interest, will continue to refinish this. What I've said all along on Northland, 110, 120 acre site, in order to break even on the Brownfield, you need three and a half St. Bead sites. And St. Beads was 12 acres. So, 36, 40 acres of development on that site will break even. The city will earn the interest, you'll earn the fees associated with managing the Brownfield program under the authority. At the end, there will be some short-term paying, but let's keep our focus on what the objective is, building the tax base. That site is worth probably a half billion dollars in investment. When that hits our tax rolls, that's how we move the city forward and get through the crash that we've had, the loss of the 40% tax base.
Fred, I hear you. And let me, let me put it this way. You are on top of this every day, okay? A council person cannot keep up with that three days a month. In other words, council, my charter is a responsibility with this money. And yet, there's things that crop up time to time. I told you, you know, you talk about the $19 million for the McDonald Towers and whatever. You know, I talked to you about it, it was last year that we got the money, half of it's already gone, all right? What I'm trying to say is that to keep up with the current thing that was happening in the finances of the city are difficult, are difficult. And I'm one who likes to know, because I'm very concerned about the stability of a city and what's happening, and when I see that point three tenths, you know, and I see this previous assessor, what he did and mistakes and this and that, I am very concerned. And so, somehow, you know, one day a month, the finance doesn't get there either. I mean, I like to be aware of when I move money, want to know how much more we have, where is it, how are we going to go? And whether it be confidential or not, still, I, as a councilman, should know these things. I should know every single dollar that we have, in what account, what fund, and how we're doing with it before it says, this one's been decreased or this one hasn't. I'm just making my own observation of what my concerns are. And so, movement, it has really nothing to do with really what's going on tonight, but I guess I just want to take the opportunity while we're talking about this, talk about how difficult it is to stay aware of the money as we get involved, just like the 3.2 across the street. You know, we dangled with that thing for six months and didn't even get an RFP out. Now, I don't even know if we got a contract yet. Things are happening. I mean, I don't know the timeline. I mean, to me, you know, I want to know if I'm on track with my timeline. And we know we have one, but who knows about it? I mean, you may know about it, or Terry might know about it and see where this is going. But believe it or not, I mean, I don't know. I couldn't answer the question today. And I'd get very nervous about it.
What kind of a communication would you need to make you feel comfortable?
Well, I'd like to have known that we had an RFP out there and it didn't go out. And when it did go out, the contracts had sat, and we were sitting on $3.2 million across... And we're sitting on three point two million dollars across the street for over a year now, it'll be a year, and nothing's happening. We don't know. It's, you know, we're losing tax dollars on that piece of property. We need tax dollars, we need revenue. And, you know, if you were a developer, I mean, that's my game. I mean, that thing would have been built on already.
Yeah, I understand that.
So that's what makes me nervous.
Yeah, I understand it. But I'm saying, what do you need from Fred or Lynn?
I don't know what that, that communication, where it should fit in. But somehow, it should be talked about at least one meeting a month at least, so that everybody's on the same page and we know exactly what we're up to.
Okay, I don't have any problem with that. I'm just trying to figure out, not that we have to copy all the financial books.
No, I don't want to do, I don't want to do any bookkeeping. I just want to know that we sit here and I buy a truck, you know, that'd be seventy nine thousand dollars for four trucks. I want to make sure that, you know, we have money to buy a truck. Should I keep it going another twenty-five miles on it or something? I mean, you know, I mean, when's the time, you know? And, you know...
I think I understand.
Yeah, but at the same time, you know, we get raped over by employees.
Yeah.
All right? And I sit there and see a seventy-nine thousand dollar salary and with benefits, a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars and an eighty percent benefit package, you know? And it was shocking to me. I didn't know that, I mean, we'd negotiate, we'd negotiate. And then somebody telling me they can't make it on what we pay them. And here you are sitting over here, actually, they're getting a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars a year?
Yeah.
They're not making seventy-nine, they're making a hundred and forty-two. And it's kind of deceiving, you know? And you said that person would quit his job that they have here, they could get out, go out and get that health insurance that we give them or that pension that we give them.
Right.
And, you know, I just feel that communication is just not sufficient, you know, to us and maybe also to the employees, you know?
Mr. Chair, if I may, one of the things that, since I've been here, hasn't been here yet, and with the new finance committee chair is, you know, I'm definitely open to all the reforms of, you know, whatever type of communication that, you know, council sees fit. You know, pretty much everyone knows that any type of information we need to modify, just fix. However, I'm definitely open book and have an open door policy to modify anything. And we're working on getting, I mean, we've been producing some monthly reports regularly. We need to maybe restructure the way they're presented. But for the most part, I believe that we're making the best attempt to make sure the information is right.
I, in fact, just earlier on this afternoon, I met with you and needed a document. And back in the eighties, you know, we went through every page of the budget, you know, and knew exactly how many people were in that department, how much they were making. And by page by page by page, then you go in the budget and funds and this and that. I ran across something I didn't even know, that we even had organizational chart on boards and commissions in eighty-eight. You know, and, I mean, everybody knew everything. And I was surprised we even had it. But what I'm glad to say is that I think we had a more understanding when we made decisions before than I feel now. And that's in my opinion.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I may be out in the woods somewhere, but, you know, I can't run a business this way. And I guess when I don't understand where the money is, I guess I get concerned or what my liabilities are.
I think between the four of us, maybe we can work on something that can make all of the council members more keyed in on where we stand on finances. Because finances, if you don't have the money, you can't do the things you want. Or if you think you're going to do something, you run out of money, then you're in trouble. So I can understand what you're, what you're after. But I think maybe the four of us can, and put Dan involved as chair of the finance committee to see how we can better the communication between the finances and council.
Yeah, if we make a decision to do something, we got to stay on that sucker and make sure that whatever we bought it for gets done, so we get into revenue or don't get into the mortgage. One or the other.
Right. Mr. Moore, did you ever hear that?
My question's...
Oh, okay. Mayor?
To simplify on this, I think we need to have a monthly financial report of year-to-date expenditures. And we've talked about that. That would help everybody with a greater understanding. Also, to simplify where we're at on the agenda, I congratulate you, Lynn, on bringing this tonight in February. Normally, we got these year-end budget adjustments in May. And so this is much more helpful. So, you know, I appreciate that. You know, obviously, the budget's a living document. You set it in June, things change, it's not set in stone. So you, you need to come back from time to time, and I appreciate that. And the other thing I'd point out is that this budget adjustment, we are talking now about four months left on the current budget. And our budget director has outlined where the money is coming from. That gives me a great sense of confidence, knowing that, you know, you're not coming to a budget adjustment in August after we just approved a budget. You're coming with four months left, and you've outlined how we're, how we're going to make these changes. And I'm sure that in, within the current budget, there are places where the money isn't, hasn't been spent and isn't going to be spent by June thirtieth. That happens every, every year. So I greatly appreciate that. And as we talked when you came on board last year, I really hope that this year, when we go to do the budget, instead of seeing last year's budget and the proposed budget, we will see the actuals. If you're asking me, as the mayor, to draft a budget, I need actuals. So that when I present that in April, I have, I have a sense of how the money's been spent. And, you know, to date, I really don't have that. So on that point, I agree with Mr. Fakasim. But I know that this is a work in progress. You haven't been here a whole year, but I can see the difference since you've arrived. And I don't want you to walk out of here with bruises tonight, because I think we're making progress. So I appreciate that. And again, this is, this is something that we've needed, and it's early in the year instead of May.
Well, go ahead, Lynn. Ken, I'm your loser, Lynn. I got the greatest respect for her, so I don't want you through. Throw that out. I'll come up with asking you some questions about money, you can't tell me. Don't be sitting there so cocky, telling me you know everything.
I'm not being cocky, Don, I'm trying to tell you that.
You just, you know everything, and I know you don't.
I'm just being light, Don, you're not light.
Mr. Moore, very well.
Just to let the council know that the finance committee has a couple of things in the pipeline that Lynn has been working on based on how we request. And it gives actual, budget versus actual, and those kinds of things. The fourth is, is at a stage now, I think, we should probably bring it to council sometime fairly soon. I didn't want to come to council until we get flushed a lot of things up, you know, it would lead to a whole lot of conversations with some holes in it right now. So we're back to what Don has brought up, what Ken has brought up. We are, and I think Lynn will let me know, but because she understands what kind of questions you're going to get if you put it out here among the seven of us. And that will give us a, well, my dream is to have a monthly, a monthly, because when I was, when I had a budget, I would do a flash report with ten vendors there. I knew pretty much what was going on in my department, you know, for a flash report. I would love to have that, but Lynn is working, based on the system that we have here, what she appears to work with, but we have something that will be budget versus actual and performance to date and those kinds of things.
Well, we used to get that. We used to get that on a monthly basis with a package that showed what the budget was, what had been spent year-to-date, so what was left.
Right.
And it would give you a percentage of how much money you had spent. And that was something that we used. We'd look at it and see how much, how the money was being spent. So then we went to a new and improved system, and we don't have that anymore.
Yes, I was just a little surprised myself when I broke this up then, and it was not there. I don't know how you cooperate like that.
And we've been asking, we've been asking for it for at least a couple of years, maybe almost three years now, so that we could take a look at it. And there are some things that are promoted, there are some things that are rearloaded, and there are some things that are...
Okay, well, Eric, the finance committee is going down the train, the train is coming down the track. Those, two documents, one, definitely the budget versus actual, and also an overlay that shows us what kind of big expense items are all in the rack, so we can, you look at this and then you can just, oh, this is going to hit, this is going to hit, so we put almost a person forward. So, well, but we're strict, I think when Don first mentioned something. And I think there's probably been a, the finance committee, we said, it came out of the contingency of money, but it did come to how much was left. And I think someone gave me a number, gave the committee a number, how much was left individually. He watched and he took these out, and I would see it here. But to put a, sort of to the cap on the line of questioning there, somebody come down the track that, well, it shifts, if individuals are concerned about what we are financially, we're back to all account areas, all management account lines.
Okay. Any other questions?
No question.
Yes, Mr. Mandelbaum.
And the, you know, the cost for the Northland proposed budget, we have, under acquisition cost, you have target. Is that an actual, is that a hopeful number, is that an actual number?
Can I jump in? That, can I just say we're working on things?
Okay.
Probably the best answer for that?
And then what about J.C. Penney? Is that also in the works?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a reason that number six is missing off the list? Was that, was there something taken off, or is it just, I don't know?
I'm sure I took something off when we put this together.
Yes, I will.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? We'll see you on the plane next.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, proposed ordinance amendment for the water and sewer charges.
We might. These are two proposed ordinances. Both of them are intended to address the following circumstances. We know that generally, water and sewer charges, if they remain delinquent, are rolled onto the taxes. And in that method, the city has a lien against the property for which the water and sewer services are provided. So it makes those charges pretty collectible by the city. The provision of the state law has always been there, and our ordinance has semi-addressed the situation. But in general, the state law says, cities, you cannot have a lien against the real property for water and sewer charges where is a landlord-tenant situation, and the landlord has passed the obligation for the water charges and the sewer charges on to the tenant. So if the landlord transfers those obligations, provides you a written popular lease, and the lease has an expiration date, and it's, everything is very clear that the tenant is responsible, in those circumstances, city, you cannot lien the property, because it's not the landlord's obligations, it's the tenant. So what we're intending and trying to do by these two ordinances, one, two point one five five is for the water rates, and two point one seven seven is on the sewer side. It is to establish a pretty concise protocol for how this will work. And we're trying to get into a situation where we protect the water-paying customers, because if a tenant now is responsible and we can't lien the property, if the tenant disappears in the middle of the night, that means all the other users of the system have to pay that tenant's water in some, you know, system where we're allocating among all the users. It's to say that there should be a security deposit required of the tenant. We're suggesting a six-month, at least a six-month deposit if the tenant pays that. And that way, if the tenant does not pay a water bill, we will have a deposit to take it against. And we're also saying that if where a tenant doesn't pay, we give a notice, and then if the delinquency is not brought up current, we're going to shut the water off. Because it's such a different situation than in most cases where we know we can collect it against the taxes. So we really think that there ought to be a unique set of circumstances to deal with this. And ultimately, we think if a tenant is not paying the water bill, the water should be shut off. As part of that, there is then, if the tenant says, okay, I'll come in and pay it, now there is a charge that the city has to undertake to go turn the water back on. They have to go back out to the premises and actually turn the system back on, that we ought to recoup those charges to have to come back out. And I worked with the water department, they just got those numbers to me. But in general, if, if the request to turn the water back, comes back, turn the water back on is for a normal work time. We're suggesting ninety dollars. That would take care of the cost of having one of our employees go out and turn it back on. If the request is for a Saturday, we're looking at about a hundred and five dollars, and that's because there's now an overtime charge. And if it's Sunday or a holiday, that's under the union contract, that's double time, the charge would be a hundred and twenty-five. So the resident gets to, I mean, if they say, I can certainly wait till Monday, then it'll be a ninety dollars. If they say, no, I really need it on Sunday, it's a hundred and twenty-five. So you don't see those exact numbers here, because I just got those. But if council, there's a consensus on these ordinances, I'll build those in when it comes back in front of you next Monday. So that is what we're trying to do. Again, come up with a system where we know that the rest of the water and sewer charges don't have to subsidize tenants who don't pay their water bill.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Mandelbaum.
I don't want to make an assumption that this is for both homeowners that rent their homes and apartments.
Generally, apartments aren't individually, a lot of times, you're going to see that the landlord, that's in your rent. Generally, you're going to see most of this for single-family homes. Somebody's renting them out.
But if they just, if an apartment owner decides that each tenant should pay their water bill separately?
If they're separately metered, yeah. And we did see this, probably late last year, we got from one landlord who had bought up, I don't know, eight or ten single-family homes, and put a provision in each of the leases that the tenant was responsible. We got the leases under the statutes, so we know that with respect to those, we really have a collection issue. And we need to deal with those in a, in a certain circumstance, so that we know we can collect.
Is that it? No, it's not it.
Again, I'm trying to figure out how to formulate this question.
Oh, okay.
If, how would we know, would we be collecting those lease agreements?
Yes, they have to bring them in. And what we've done is we've kind of established, I've got about four or five pages we put together as a protocol. And this tells a landlord and a tenant exactly what you have to do. The statute even would agree with that. You have to come in with the lease, it has to have a definite expiration date, it has to say that the obligation to pay the water has been transferred over to the tenant. So all of these requirements we'll look for. And if all of those things are done, then we're going to talk to the tenant about the security deposit, post in the deposit, and go through all of these provisions.
So when someone comes in and registers their house as a rental property, would that trigger a flag?
Well, we better cross-reference though, absolutely we should.
Okay.
Yes, that way we'll know. So the landlord here is going to try and take advantage of something that helps him out. We ought to know on the flip side and then turn that over to rental registration, because we know at that point it's a rental.
So they should both talk to each other?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Fakasim.
So what do we do, I know this is residential, but what do we do with businesses that don't pay? Get way back in the rear? Is there any way that, you know, I mean, Michigan Inn, for example, is a good example?
It's a good example, it's our poster child.
I mean, is there anything that we can do?
I think what we've done probably more recently is just watch. I think what we've done probably more recently is just watch those. And so when they get to a certain point, and again, historically, we have not really suffered a loss on those. Because what happens is, even on a business, a commercial, if they don't pay their water bill, and the county goes through and forecloses on a tax because it gets rolled a tax, they don't pay their tax, it gets sold, you know, the only time we really get harmed is when the property sells at a tax sale and doesn't bring enough in to pay for all the taxes, including the water. That doesn't happen that often. The Plaza, the Michigan Inn was one where it certainly did.
But those are the cases that we let it extend, and they're crying, you know, I'll pay you next month.
Right, that's where we have to be...
They get suckered in.
Right.
You know, sorry.
Right.
And then it becomes greater than what you can sell it for.
That's right, and that's where, and that's where we have a real risk. And so, you know, the ordinance says, we shall turn off water. That's what the ordinance says, and that's what the ordinance has said. And I think when you, when you get to, especially the businesses, again, homes, we haven't really had a problem of them not selling for enough to pay off back taxes. Businesses, absolutely, if we're going to let those ride, we need to understand that if you don't, if you don't, you know, put it on the tax bill and collect it like you normally would, and it keeps going, you're going to, you could have an issue. So I think those are the instances, and we administratively, you know, there have been meetings where we look at those, are there any that look like they're getting, you know, substantive where we may be? So I think that just keeping an eye on the ones that have delinquent waters. You know, a lot, a lot of places and individuals too, they just like to pay it when they pay their tax bill. That, you know, rather than pay a water, they like to put it on their taxes, there's this thinking that you can then deduct it, which you're not supposed to, but people think they can. But, you know, they're paying, they're paying a rolled-a-tax administrative charge too. It's costing them more money to do that, but I know people do that. But I think just us watching, and where it starts getting into a, into a zone where we feel that property may not sell to cover that, we need to shut that water off. And ultimately, that's what we did with the Michigan Inn. We finally did shut it off. I suspect if we didn't, it probably would still be the only way it was, so.
Okay. That's it. Ms. Moore.
Morris.
Morris. Sorry.
Sue, section one, revision five, it says, the third line requires a security department that should be deposited, I'm thinking.
Sure, absolutely.
But did you send, did you send them out for the security deposit?
We're looking at a six-month, so we'll look at, we're going to look at a situation where if it's, how many people are in there, we'll know from the lease generally. If it's a five-person, that'll have an impact on how much that deposit is versus if it's a one-person.
Is it? I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
If we shut off the water, how much time does a person have to get out of to vacate the premises?
Then it would get, building and building with no water, they would red-tag it that it's not fit for occupancy.
And how long?
I think they, yeah, I think they give ten days or so. I mean, it is a health hazard, so I think that that is not the same situation as just, you know, there's a minor problem. Without water, people shouldn't be living.
I understand it. But it would seem like without water, you can't wash or cook your toilet or anything. It seems like ten days is a long time.
Yeah, I could, you know, I wish they were here still. Maybe there is a different, you know, parameters. Obviously, if it's unfit for human occupancy, they can, they can tag, they would tag it right then. They could theoretically order them out almost immediately. Whether they give them some notice, I suspect there's some advance notice, maybe it isn't ten days, but I'll, I'll check into that.
I would think any communication that we send to them would be, your water bill is in, is delinquent, and if it gets shut off, you won't be able to live there, you know?
Sure, absolutely, so that they know.
It's considered uninhabitable by Michigan law for, and you won't be able to, so...
Right. We could, we could certainly build that into a notice, absolutely.
Otherwise, well, that may also cause people to have the water, when that water's shut off, move up, keep running home. And then we don't know where they're at.
True.
And then we'll have a hard time collecting the water, the bill.
From a tenant, you mean?
From the tenant.
Well, again, that's why the importance of the deposit.
Okay.
So that we've got something to reserve.
Six months seems like it's going to raise the hair on the back of the neck of a landlord.
And again, remember, it's the tenants that's posting this, so that, that could be a lot of money. The problem is, on residential, we bill every two months. So now there's two months' worth of water, then a notice has, so that you're probably not going to get your bill for about three weeks after that two months, so now you're at three months. We give you thirty days, you're at four months already. If you do anything less than about a six-month deposit, I'm not so sure that it's going to be worth...
I understand.
And the landlords put us in this position, for serving us that effort.
Absolutely, they have.
Yeah.
I mean, they've taken advantage of what the state law provides, so it's nothing wrong that they're doing, but it'd be taking away our, our main way to collect this water is significant, and we need to do, we need to deal with it. I mean, I suspect what will happen, if a tenant, if they can't find a tenant that could pay the deposit, if that becomes almost, it's not marketable, they're going to have to go and pay the water themselves to avoid that whole deposit.
Or take, take that restriction off, and say, water is part of your lease.
Exactly, and they'll cover it that way.
Yeah.
So...
I have one other question.
It goes back to subsidizing.
It does.
If you don't collect it, then we're all paying.
Then everyone pays for it, and that's not, that's not right.
So, and if they, if they run off, and let's say they don't have a deposit, or they've used their deposit all up and fast, and there's nothing in here that says, once you've used part of your deposit, you have to replenish it?
Right.
So that we have, you know, the full deposit?
Yeah, and that's, it's a good point. We've done that in some of our other ordinances. We've said, you know, if you replenish this, then you have to replenish. I don't know, I mean, what, so let's assume, again, a tenant, in order to get in, if they'll post it, right? Now, now we've used a couple hundred dollars to pay a bill, and what's the likelihood of them coming back in? And now are we going to shut the water off because they haven't come back in to, I don't know. I mean, I think at some point, at least if you have the deposit, you've at least got your initial protection. I would have no problem putting that in, I'm just wondering, at what point does this become almost unmanageable from water's standpoint?
Now, I know, at least I think I know that with consumers, they can't shut off the gas in the middle of the winter when it's, when it's cold out.
Yeah, I think there are some parameters.
Yeah. This doesn't apply to them.
No, we have the right to shut off water. Michigan law allows us to shut off Michigan, to take water, yes.
No matter what that year.
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. The rest of the council, and Sue and I talked about this, if, if for some reason there isn't a deposit, if people run off, we have to eat that. Today, with it being part of the lease, we can put it on the tax roll, but if it's not on the tax roll and the tenant runs off, we have to eat, eat that, that cost. So again, it's, the rest of the, the city is paying for the people that have run off. Okay? Any other questions? Okay, we'll see you...
On the twenty-ninth?
On the twenty-ninth.
Thank you.
Wobbling right along. The enterprise, uh...
Digital signings.
Uh, did I cross something wrong? Yes, sorry, digital signings.
Good evening, is everyone, I don't know, good evening, can everybody hear me? Good evening, is it working? Good evening, everyone, my name is Lovearm Walker. For the record, I'm the Technology Services Director. I'm hoping this is a feel-good item. I am going to need your input, council, so I'm not sure, the chair, if you want questions during or after, but we'll just see how it goes.
No, do it afterwards.
Do it after, okay. All right, so here's a quick presentation.
You might want to pull the lectern around a little bit, so that, there you go. Thanks.
I am going to have to do a demonstration, so I am going to have to step away from the microphone at a certain point, and I'll try to speak up, that's pretty much for you to see the demonstration of the software. So this presentation is to let your outer body know in advance of this project. You've already authorized outdoor digital signage here outside of the municipal campus and also at Beechwoods. So this is to let you know in advance of this project. I also want to make sure you're aware of the placement of all the signs that we're going to put on the municipal campus. The last thing we're going to do at the end is receive feedback and a consensus on moving forward with this project. Why do we need digital signage? Maybe as a marketing tool. I talked to the Human Resources Director, we talked about posting job postings, maybe in Parks and Recreation, doing P and R programs, dynamic messaging. The system also allows you to do like evacuations, so if there's a tornado warning, if the televisions have the volume turned on, the sirens would go off on all the locations. For forecasting events, we can schedule them ahead of time, and we build relationships with employees, residents, and visitors alike. The digital signage locations are going to be in these five locations, we're going to have one in the City Hall lobby, Parks and Recreation, the Police Department lobby, we're going to have two in the pavilion area, and one in the Building Department. Just to make a note, the Cable 15 television station is very important to us, of course, so we're going to have a television feed run to all of those televisions. So in the event, in the event, sorry, that we have something in the pavilion, we can change the input on the remote controls, and we can just stream Cable 15 on any or all of the televisions. The evaluation process, we evaluated four companies, NRC, Tightrope, and, sorry, Cable 15 helped me facilitate that, that evaluation, ACF Technologies, and last, the Merlin Company. I do want to make a note that we did not pick a solution based solely on price. I made sure it was easy to use in the backend, so basically, if I couldn't figure it out in five or 10 minutes, I didn't want it because Technology Services is not going to be the department updating these signs. So it was rather a combination of ease of use, all of the available templates in the backend, we don't want someone to have no graphic design or anything like that, we want them to just pretty much pick and click and, and display or update the signs. And price was also a factor, of course. The Merlin Company, the reasons we selected them, here are a couple of reasons, but one neat feature that I like, it is cloud-based, so it's not hosted here. What happens, you can access the internet, you update the signs, and it pushes the data down to all the televisions here on the municipal campus. Another neat feature is that if a resident or someone wants a snowed-in at home, we could give the residents a login, and they can log in with the username and password, and they can see the messages that we have displayed on the campus. And I thought that was a really nice feature, that you don't have to come and drive in to the municipal campus to see what's really going on at City Hall. So it's cloud-based, you can read different things up there, but the Merlin Workplace Animation, they have twenty-two different contents, we'll get monthly, so with a subscription every year or every month, we'll be paying, we'll be getting new and improved graphics so that our signs can stay fresh with new and updated data. We have four thousand pieces of content to search in the backend of the software, and it enables role-based approvals. So if we want, I could update it, but say someone has to approve it after me, you can have different tiers of approval before the actual message goes live. So there were a lot of different things and different factors, but this is the company that we selected. So now I want to do a brief demonstration, just to show you how it looks, and I'll just briefly talk through it. Takes a second for it to come up because it's downloading. Of course, it's going to look different when it's displayed on a fifty-five-inch television. On the left-hand side, that's just a graphic I pulled from the internet, and I also put a message from Parks and Rec, so any department could put a message out on any board. The upper right-hand corner is always going to scroll the weather or different messages about the news. We cannot change that part of the message board. This is just a countdown, I just picked St. Patrick's Day again, I just picked the graphics, so no one has to know how to do anything fancy. These messages right here are ones that come free with the software, or it's not free because we're paying a subscription, but we get new and fresh ideas, and it's just different messages. And the one on the right is also a message that they just come up with, different feel-good messages to get people motivated throughout the day, you know, as their day goes on. And the lower portion of the screen, those are called tickers, and we can just send any messages. And we can determine if we want them scrolling all the time, not at all, on different message boards. And I just put a couple of them up just so you can see, so I just let them continue to scroll. The least amount of seconds you can have a message up is ten seconds, because we don't want them up too, too long, but we don't want somebody putting two seconds, so it's flickering all the time. So the software has that measure built in. This is just an idea I just threw up, cost-cutting ideas, it's a banner, I just put that up there, and again, I just left different messages scrolling on the right. So I can stop this, but I just wanted to see, give you an example of how it works. The March Water Reviews is coming up, so I just threw that up there just to show you how, I just pulled a house from the internet and just put it up there. And that's one of my wonderful employees, so I wanted to give him a little employee of the quarter. And we also have retirement notices and things of that nature. But I did about fifteen slides very quickly, so it took me probably about fifteen, twenty minutes to do all the different slides. And that's what I was looking for, something that was really quick and easy, easy to manipulate. I'm going to stop this. So now we're going to discuss the locations of the signs. Pavilion, if you look at the screen, I just put a little box to give you a representation of where we would like to put the digital signs. They're going to be facing the entrance of the assessing office, the two Xs in the pavilion, and the clerk's office. So the way the brackets are going to work, they can either be mounted flat back to the wall if you have a big event in the pavilion, or you can swerve it out towards the doors to attract people that are coming in the doors. Those are the two for the pavilion. Parks and Recreation, the placement is going to be over the lobby's front desk. The Police Department, they already have a television over there, we're going to replace that television. They do video arraignment on that television, we're going to use the same concept with Cable 15. So on the weekends, when they have video arraignment, they're going to take the remote control, they're going to change the input from input one, let's say, to input two, and they'll do the video arraignment, and when they're done, they'll put it back on the digital signage. The Building Department, we're going to put one right over the front desk. Right now, they have a map there, I told them I'll help them get a digital map in place of that, so they can also do the same concept of where we have a dual purpose for these, these digital signs. I like questions at the end, by the way. Okay, City Hall, this is where we're going to need your input. We already have a mock-up of option two, I hope you noticed it when you walked in, it may be mounted a little bit higher because we have to have brackets. But option one is, when people walk into City Hall, they're looking at our wonderful receptionist class, so, you know, while they're talking to him, maybe if they're waiting for him while he's on the telephone, they can be looking at something that may answer their question. So that's one option. The second option is where it is right now, so when you're entering from the pavilion, you're walking, you'll see the signs. There's also couches outside of the clerk's office for people to sit down, and they'll be able to see that sign. The third option is when you enter City Hall above the catwalk. The only, the only thing about option three is that there's sunlight, we'll have to do something with shades or some type of covering if you, if you pick that option. And we'll come back to this slide at the end. Okay, the cost for the digital signage software, just in case you're going to ask at the end, there's going to be five locations, but six signs total because we have two in the pavilion. The digital signage software is nine thousand nine hundred fifty-seven dollars, and the only reason I did it for fourteen months is because I like for everything to coincide with our fiscal year. So we plan to have everything going live by May first, and that's when the software pricing would start, and it's going to coincide to the end of next fiscal year. The city administrator will sign that contract, but the annual cost starting July first would be eight thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars. So personnel designated to update these signs, City Hall, Community Relations is going to update, Parks and Recreation, we'll have Parks and Recreation staff, and everything's going to be relevant to each area. The pavilion will have Parks and Recreation update them, Police Department, building will have building, and of course, because Cable 15, they have their own events, they'll be able to access all of the signs and input any information that they would like to enter. Two points I should or would like to mention, the two signs in the pavilion, we call them clones, so the ones in the pavilion will always have the same information on them. All the other locations, they can either be different messages or have the same messages. So there's an evacuation, we can go in the software, even from home, of course, because it's internet-based, and we can just update the signs, and they can push out that message to all of the signs. So they can be all the same or completely independent, except for the two in the pavilion. And that's it.
Questions, Mr. Graham.
Would there be one overall administrator, let's just say we had a critical message that needed to go out on all sides, is there one designated person to override everything?
Yes.
Yes, I would, I would let the city administrator pick that person, but I would think it would be Community Relations. That would be my thought, but I would have to talk to the city administrator to see who would be the focal person.
Well, you would have that capability.
Yes.
Because you could have five different.
Right.
Um, yeah, well, Cable 15.
Well, Cable 15 will have access to all of them all the time anyway.
So would, would, would they be the override?
What are you, what are you making?
Override, if you have five different messages, Cable 15 decides sending a message, a message to, well, you override everything else.
Well, it depends.
Say tornado.
Yeah, tornado, a primary.
Yes, and what we're going to do anyway, we're going to have backup, so I'm not sure, again, we'll talk to the city administration, but Community Relations may be the primary and Cable 15 may be the backup.
And it's funny, because there's different messaging coming from different locations, with the Building Department or with Parks and Rec, and the thought is, and the same product can be used on our Southfield, is to have Cable 15 produce a whole lot of very short video things, you know? Maybe what you walk into lobby, the lobby of City Hall, maybe it features Parks and Rec events promoting quality of life businesses in Southfield, where Parks and Rec is selling, golf leagues now forming, you know, people, volleyball league, ice time available, basketball.
Sure, that's fine.
And the Building Department may be things on code and.
Let's answer your question. There's going to be several administrators.
We had a major event, tornado or something, I don't know, the building collapsed. You know, everybody needs to know that across the board.
Well, there's going to be several administrators, and depending on what's going on, I mean, the administrator may not be able to reach Michael, he may be able to reach me, so it depends on what the situation is and what's going on, but there's going to always be more than one administrator of this.
So definitely, there won't be a chief, we'll have five chiefs.
Within the current budget, you have your fire safety system being involved for this campus, and we know that we're a few months away from putting that out on the street, and as that moves forward, there's probably a way to tie your fire safety system, your public address system, all to this system.
Okay, another question is with respect to residents. You said residents, you might have access to this, or you would have to give them a password?
Yes, username and password. It could be residence, residence, whatever we decide that would be.
Okay, this is something that, the info would not necessarily be germane to Channel 15, because normally people just go to Channel 15, they don't need to go into this.
And you don't have to do that, I was just giving you an idea of the features or the capabilities of the software. Keep in mind, we're just really trying to get your consensus on moving forward. At that point, then we're going to have a meeting, and we're going to have a meeting with Cable 15, Community Relations, Technology Services, and we'll determine who's going to be doing what, and we'll define that role, and then we'll all be on the same page.
I have one other suggestion, I like number two.
I like.
Mr. Casey?
So he, I think he came first. That lobby, that lobby is, is kind of special, and, and I walked in today and see that thing hanging there over the gazelle, and I got sick. I mean, and it doesn't belong there, there's nobody in this world who is designing to put that thing over an art piece. It, I mean, it's got to be against of all, invisible, I, I, I really don't think it belongs anywhere in the, in the municipal building. Could be in, in the Home Information Center.
I think there's already something over there with Cable 15.
Yeah, there's a TV there, yeah.
And option four could be not to have one in the lobby as well.
But I mean, it's been a fortune to do that lobby and design it, and see that thing hanging there, it's just, I don't know, sort of a total draw in a clock.
And that's why we thought a safe option two would be over the receptionist desk.
But it's on that wall, I can't remember.
There is a plaque, there's a plaque, and I think it just talks about when the city was incorporated, but I can't remember.
It wasn't important, right?
It's important, but it could also be moved.
Yeah. There's balance on the other side, you have a prayer by a counselor.
What?
A prayer by a counselor.
On the other side of the.
A counselor's office.
Oh.
Yeah. Then you have another plaque that's when it was redone in 1973.
Or we could do the other side and come back to this one.
I think the lobby is classic. When you come into a lobby, it looks rich, and I think that just means that lobby.
But, and it also has a lot of traffic, and this is a means to disseminate information without normally having.
But there's the traffic, it's not paying bills, tax, I, I mean, the people go to the clerk's office, they don't even live here, they're getting birth certificates and passports and, and death things and whatever. I, I'll bet you, I mean, I will come in lobby all the time, and if we get bags, we get, we get bags, they throw the water bill in the mail, unless it's tax day, it's the only time you even have cars, even in the circle. I mean, I, I'd like to know how many people come through there.
I think the receptionist desk keeps count of how many people that comes in that area, so we'd have to check on that, but even if we get five or 10 people, maybe they share with five or 10 more people, we're really just trying to get information out, just a marketing tool.
You're going to disrupt the, the beauty of the lobby for ten people?
Well, I'm hoping that more than 10 people. It's kind of low.
I, I'm a realist, I see there, I come in there, I talk to Mr. Moore all the time, and outside of people coming in for bags or going to the clerk's office, you don't see anybody.
We average about 98.
It's in your election.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, councilman, we average about 98 foot traffic that comes in.
You said the average is 98 people per day.
Hundred people a day.
Yeah, and I try to keep the counter active by, by interacting with people, so prior to me being here, when I first started, there was an average of maybe like four, three or four people.
They come in to visit you, John, because it's a pleasure.
There were averages.
I mean, I come in to visit you too, just for that one reason.
Well, that's the whole point, we want to engage people, you know, everyone wants to be engaged, I like to think, you want to welcome them into City Hall, I mean, at y'all, this is City Hall, so it's a special place to come, not, not to just pay your taxes, but when they do spend their money, at least you can say hello and make them feel good about coming here. But, um, um, you know, it, I usually have maybe between 10, 15, 20 people who actually stop over at neighborhood information center. I mean, it's, it's more and more, because people are, are starting to enjoy coming in here and spending time, and, and I try to invite them to come in and take a look at pathways and things like that, so that's what we want. We want people to be, to be more active and, and come here into City Hall, so it is working on my end, I, I like to think, so. But we have, we average about 80 to 90 people who actually come here daily, and even more traffic when it comes to paying taxes, and the phone calls are even higher, so around 150, 160.
That's what, nine hours?
Uh, that's eight hours, from eight to five.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, it's not clear to me, I agree with Mr. Passy on one of his comments, but I think if you're going to have it in the lobby, it should be where the television set is and not home, you know, where we have the table there.
Information Center.
No, Information Center, I will put it there. I don't, there's a piece of art on the workplace, sense of painting up there on the wall, I don't want to see that be covered.
No, that wasn't a part of it, that won't be touched.
Well, but I, I think it's better to put it where the television set is in the, not a lot of code here, but.
Information Center, neighborhood information.
That makes more sense to me, to put it in the lobby, I think it's very distracting, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that.
So I have two for option four?
I don't like two, I don't like three, I like one. And I think if it's in the neighborhood Information Center, it's going to get missed, and we were talking about marketing the programs and services that we have in the city. We just spoke earlier about trying to increase the number of people who are involved in recycling, so that's just a way to, you know, draw their eyes. I, I think we can make some adjustments about some of the historical pieces that are there now and still keep them in the board, but I like that, I too like to come and visit, I'm coming to visit more because pleases so pleasant.
So why don't you put it, I mean, behind him?
Yes, right where, right where the picture is, right, right above him.
I can't, I can't, I'm not clear what that is.
Oh, hold on, I can. I just put the box over to give you an idea.
Oh, it's right behind, right behind him?
Yeah, it would go right over this, but this is the piece.
Receptionist.
He is, yeah.
So that's a small, no, I, I.
Yeah, so that's where it would go. So that would, that would be the piece that would need to be moved.
As long as it doesn't go over the artwork and.
It's not, the artwork is above, it's a few.
Yeah, I, I know that, but it looks so small there, but I don't know that.
In there, you can't see it.
To me, that, I hate to use words, sacred, small.
And there is a television already in the Information Center that I, I do overlook it all the time, I don't look at it at all.
We can move it out, if you have it on the stand right in front.
Or we could go with option four.
Is that it? Yes, of course.
That's it.
Okay.
Mr. Brewell?
I think, you know, if we want to, the whole concept is to disseminate information, and that's why we're in this whole concept. And I think you try to come up with different positions that get a lot of traffic and/or, you know, people, information is, is being disseminated. With respect to reverence for the lobby and the art, this thing would be above the banner, I've been in some various, you're in that building, automotive headquarters, lobbies and all that stuff, each one of them, as I try to recall, has something telling you about the company or what the company's doing, or they're, they're selling something, they got a, a, a big TV promoting the Cadillac, Chevrolet or Ford or something. So if, so this place gets 100 people a day, it's an ideal spot for something to disseminate information, so we need to consider something for this particular location. And today, I know, number two is, is, and understand, it won't be hanging that.
It can't because of the brackets, exactly.
Yeah, so it'd be up, you'd have one of the banners there. And let's just say the clerk gets most of the traffic, or, and or.
The treasurer.
Whatever, you come in, so I know when I'm coming in, most of them get a little clerk or something over there. And that's why that, that location for me is, would be ideal, as far as where the Mr. Congeniality is located. So, but I, I would hate to distract from his workload, because I understand he, he answers the phone and all this good stuff, you know, to lay that basket. So it's for having it over his head, would probably, you know, you're going to have people, I mean, it just seem to be, would interfere with his work and, and also into his pleasant personality. So that's why I'm fully pulling it to, but, you know, if we are, if we are individuals of disseminating information, disseminating about Southfield, something has to be in that lobby, because it gives a lot of traffic, and that's, that's an ideal spot for, or, or you could put, well, maybe option five could be. Or when you come in, just put it back, all the way back where the clerk's office is, you know, up there, over that, that door, the exit door, that might be a phenomenal.
It's also glass, or?
I don't know, I, I don't know what's there now, but that one might be a little.
You're talking about right here?
Yeah, where, where the pavilion, the entryway here to the pavilion.
Yeah, that's it.
Back on that, you said.
It's glass, so we have to talk about mounting it.
Well, yeah, well, consider that'd be option five.
I think it'd be a little odd.
Somebody did suggest that area as well, but.
Okay.
But there's nothing there in that, against that, you know, that's.
Put it on the stand.
Or, and why couldn't it be right there on the side by, just the side of the door, across from it?
Above the clerk's office?
I don't, no, right over, move down your hand, right, the other side of the door.
Oh, here's the door right here.
Yeah, the other side, keep going back.
Over here?
Yeah.
Well, Verne, I think you got, yeah, I think, most of the president, are we, uh, and can, this is protocol, are we in agreement that this is something that we want to do and, and to depositioning itself to be valid and determined? We're good on four, on, and one we need to work out is what, you know, what's in the lobby.
Well, we haven't decided what we want to do yet, except for, or already designed where it ought to be.
Well, you have, you did budget for this originally two years ago.
Yeah, we looked for a remodel of this room, too.
That's correct, that's what I like to hear.
Council President, Mr.?
Oh, I would just wanted to say, um, excuse me, when I was working on this a couple of years ago, I presented it in a stand, so there was a stand that the monitor.
Like a kiosk?
Yes, like a kiosk, and so you could put it on a stand where it wouldn't interfere with anything on the walls of the lobby, and even though it has to be connected to a cable, you still could put it up against that wall, and it would be on a stand, and it would be right away, but you could get to it and it would be clear.
Would you recommend that you still use a 50-inch monitor?
Oh, yeah, it's fine. In fact, we have the stand down in our studio that we move around for when people require video conferencing or they need a video monitor, we have a 50-inch monitor on it, it's down in our studio. It would, it'd be a cleaner look.
We did propose a stand as well.
Thank you.
It was interesting, I was going to suggest the same option five that Mr. Brewell did, to have it, you know, closer to the clerk's office, but also, or on your way out of the municipal complex, walking back out, so as you're leaving, you see the message.
You can't do that because when the, when the sun sets in the west, it blocks out the, because all the light comes through the windows of the door, it would neutralize it, so.
Right, because the other thing is, you know, when you have the signs higher up, I just know that maybe it's just me personally, I tend to not look at anything else around me and may bump into things or trip over things. I think it was at eye level, it may be, be better to stand as, you know, like a modified option five, I guess.
So what, what I would recommend then is that we go with option seven or eight, and that's going to be maybe just get a stand, and when we get it, we'll maybe come back, or we'll position it different places, and then we just pick a spot. But we'll move with the other five of where I've already proposed, is that okay?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to have a consensus around the table about.
Other stand.
Yeah, as soon as questions are all asked.
Well, I think, I'm just thinking that, but with the stand in the lobby, it's not going to get in the way, because you like to move it, you constantly move it in the end of.
Election.
Election, and you have the Memorial Day Veterans Day, everybody's in the lobby, so that will create a, it's going to have a nightmare with respect to justice.
And then with the, with the stand, once we run that cable fee, you're going to be spending money every time you want to remove the network fee and cable fee, so for, for me, it's better for it to be fixated, but whatever you.
Well, at the council president's meeting, if you recall, my concern was that it should be above head level because of, sometimes we, we crowd the lobby with people, Veterans Day and all, and you still want to be able, people to see it, so you don't want it hidden behind people.
Right. So look like, I'm just jumping ahead here, look like option five, go ahead a door up the pavilion.
Over here.
Yeah, whatever, one of the doors ahead.
Something's going to have to get moved, so.
I don't like that.
I don't know what that is right there, I think it's just planted.
When you go into the pavilion, I mean, the clerk's office is here, the, the doors to the pavilion are here, just put it above the doors, head it out, out of the pavilion, if you can mechanically get it up there.
Right, and I'm having to have somebody survey it and tell me if it can mount.
That's the only, that's the only factor, if you cannot mechanically make it safe, if, you know, you might go back to option four.
Yeah, the, the one wrinkle in that is, depending on the structure of the wall behind there, if it has to go high enough, then the bridge is going to block anyone that wants to go into the treasurer's office from seeing it, they'd have to go walk clear under the bridge headed for the city clerk's office in order to see it, if it's too high.
True.
So.
Well, I'm sure hired a six feet.
You know, that's really committee detail, we're not the committee. If we decide we need it in the lobby, then I do, I feel that we ought to defer it to the committee to find the best location, that you've heard our, you've heard our cases, find the best location and put it in a lobby, three months after it's there, nobody will care what it's saying.
You promise?
I do.
You promise?
I do. Mr. Mayor?
Verne, I, one of the locations was going to be on, affixed to the railing itself so that it wasn't hanging down, and maybe tilted a little bit.
Yeah, this one would be, yes. And even this one, we just tried to give you a mock-up, but because of the strings, it hung down a little further, so would be.
That's better.
I, all right, I agree with Myron, let the committee decide this.
If we, if we decide we wanna go forward with this, and is it, this is only step one, right?
Yes, but this is the biggest step.
Of course. We have, we have other buildings that...
Oh, you mean, this is the first phase? I'll, I'll talk to the city administrator.
Yeah, because we have Beechwoods, we have the, the garages, you know?
Okay.
And we have, you know...
You say garage, do you mean, um, public works?
Yeah. Yeah, we have Beechwood and, uh, Burke, the Burke. Yeah, Ice, yeah, the Ice Arena.
And the committee will be those departments that I mentioned, Cable 15, Community Relations, Building, Police, and, um, Desert Parks and Recreation, and of course, Technology Services.
Okay, now, now, oh, Mr. Mandelbaum?
This, we authorized this in this year's budget, which, I remember, which department? It, it's, is it coming out of Technology Services, Community Relations?
It's actually in the, been housed in the building for a couple of years.
Okay. Is there, is there a way, that's one question. The other question, is there a way to connect this to that app? This is Southfield?
What do you mean by connected?
So if somebody, you said someone can go at home and log on, so instead of logging on at home through a, sort of the internet, can they just...
String one of the signs, I'd have to check into that, because I know the app, you can point to a website, but you want to auto, auto log in, I'd have to check on that without the credentials, we'll have to talk to the vendor and see if we can do that. But I'll, I'll make a note of it for the committee.
Okay, let me, let me ask you a question that springs off of that. If someone logs in from home, where are they gonna log into?
There'll be a website we'll give them, it'll be the Marlin Company, whatever, slash Southfield, it'll just be a link, and they just go to it, but we'll put the link...
Will it be, will it be a drop-down menu? Because each one will have a different message on it.
Yes, once they get into it, yes.
Okay, so...
But the initial screen would just be a login, you just type in whatever we tell them, residents, residents, I'm just making that up right now.
Yeah, sure.
And then, yes, when they get in, they, they'll be able to choose Police, Parks and Recs, and they'll just have read-only rights, of course, just to be able to...
Of course, yeah, okay.
The other question is, using, using a vendor versus doing it internally, why was the decision made, I guess?
You mean, do a PowerPoint presentation versus having a...
It's, to me, it looks like something simple, that Community Relations, Cable, they can make a slide, throw it into the system and have it...
Well, you could do that, we could create a PowerPoint presentation and just scroll it, but even for Cable 15, they have software like this, just for their, what do you call it, Lisa, your billboard, your message board?
Tightrope.
Tightrope, but what's the, you call it the billboard?
Carousel.
Their carousel. So even, even though they can do it, they have something similar to this as well. But for me, I, I just wanted to deploy it, and their solution has a server base, I don't wanna do any server maintenance, I just wanna have it out in the cloud, have, pay somebody else to maintain their servers, and make it easy to use. And these templates, they're already done, it's over 4,000 things for people to choose from, so we should never have any stale information out there. But yeah, PowerPoint is kinda like, oh, well, you have doing things, and even Cable 15 has something like this in place.
Okay, now, oh, no, no, I'm...
I, I just still say, I, I mean, you can't take away from an art piece, and that's what happens. I mean, when you come into that lobby, the focus is on Marshall projects, is out. And, and any distraction from that is a waste to even have an art piece, and talent objective is a heavy one to begin. So, I, I just think that, that there may be an end, I think, go back of, of the information there, that's probably, I, I, I just don't see any need calling for any of the, all of it anyway, I really don't. I mean, it's, it's a neat trick, it's a nice, things you gotta get forward. I, I don't, I mean, I go to these places and, and I walk in, walk out, I mean, I, unless there's something I definitely wanna see and, and witness, I haven't got time for. If I go into a building to get something done, I very seldom, these banks have them sitting out there in the lobbies of some of the office buildings, and I can tell you even what it says on it, you know? I, I mean, I, I like to see what the value is by, by numbers. If, uh, if there's a hundred people, they go through the lobby, how many of them really would even bother looking at it? It's not, it's not a marketing tool at all, it's, it's a toy.
Well, when we think of marketing, I'll give you an example, like Parks and Recreation, maybe if you enter Parks and Recreation, and you see there's, I'm making this up again, a hustle class, and maybe you didn't know there was a hustle class, at least that starts the dialogue of people asking questions, and that's what we're hoping these signs will do.
Yeah, but there's a lot of people go into, to Parks and Recs, I can see it in the Parks and Recs, I can see it in the Building Department.
And the same messages in Parks and Recs can be displayed in the lobby as well, so...
I can see it in the pavilion, you know, I mean, you got a lot of walkers and things like that, and activities in there, but I just think maybe up there, be very, very cautious of where you place them.
And I will, we'll make sure the committee knows, don't touch the art, promise.
I don't wanna bring a matter, but...
All right, um...
I have to agree with Mr. Ficassi on that, um, we, we have to treat the lobby very, very respectfully, and we can't clutter it, and I, I have to agree with him. Not that it can't be, you know, and like, kind of going into a pavilion, I think that would be...
And that, that'll be the first area, we see if it's feasible, or not.
Okay, uh, we need a consensus on, do we want to move forward on putting the, the signs, the internal signs around the campus? Yes. Mr. Ficassi?
Uh, yes, excepting for the lobby.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Ms. Seymour?
Yes, excepting for the lobby.
Mr. Brownwell?
Yes, all options.
Mr. Mandelbaum?
Yes.
And I say yes. And we will defer the design to the committee.
Okay, wish me luck. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You have to have a designer put these things a little way around.
And now, let's go to the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone. After this presentation, we're gonna take a five-minute break. We've been sitting for three hours, so we'll take a five-minute break. Okay, we're back in session.
Back in, it wasn't five minutes before break.
No, we're not taking, I said, after the...
All this?
After the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone, we're gonna take a five-minute break.
Mr. President, at the Friday, uh, February 12th meeting in the Neighborhood Services Committee, we presented the concept to move forward, uh, for consensus tonight to possibly proceed with the, uh, Neighborhood Enterprise Zone formation within the city of Southfield. A few years ago, we made a major focus on our tax base, and as part of our continued tax base initiative funds, this is one of the, uh, community economic development tools that made available within the state of Michigan. Uh, and it's, it is pursuant to, uh, Public Act 147 of, uh, 1992. Before we get started, I wanted to just walk you through some, uh, some of the boards we put together for this presentation. This first board breaks down...
Trying to get these papers, we're...
This first board breaks down, and this is based on true cash value. Keep in mind, we assess that 50% of true cash value. And we take, uh, the city through, uh, almost a heat analysis. This is all of our residential, our single-family homes, plotted by neighborhood, by lots, by price point. And you'll see, uh, the lighter color is under, where we may have a vacant, uh, piece of property, and then we go down. Obviously, as we move further to the north, the property values increase. The next, I wanted to just point out, um, we have previously talked about rentals in the city, and you wanna look at where, this is based on what's in our system, and there's some, there, there are some gaps, but we have 1,036 homes that are certified, and then another 878 homes that are expired, that are either going through a certification process, and the Building Department's been cleaning this up. But you'll see heavier concentrations in sections 20, uh, 34, 35, and 13. Pursuant to the housing, or the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone, the zone, we can, it has the 10 contiguous parcels, it had, um, 10 contiguous parcels, cannot exceed 15% of our total land area. And again, now we're just, and the true cash value has to be under $80,000.
Can you say that again?
Again, we pull up, you know, where are just those parcels? So we're moving forward in the consensus...
Fred, can you say that again about the 10 contiguous parcels?
You have to have 10 contiguous parcels, and the true cash value needs to be under 80,000.
At minimal.
At, at minimal, that's correct. The, uh, the recommendation of the Neighborhood Services Committee was to focus on sections 34, 35, which we're calling the South Central, and the first four blocks between 12 Mile, Catelpa, four, first four blocks, uh, that would be rest of Greenfield. So, what I'd like to do is just, uh, the, the other thing I wanted to show you that the Neighborhood Committee looked at, is we took average dollars per square foot by section number, and you'll see that if you look at this area here, the South, you know, the South Central, there, and then here, you'll see that we've got things qualified, but where this gets interesting, hold on, I want for a second. When you just transpose the rental concentrations there, too, where we've had a lot of activity. Uh, we did the 12 Neighborhood Walks, uh, this summer, and we saw quite a bit, you know, we were in this neighborhood, we were in, uh, this part of Magnolia subdivision, and we, we saw quite a bit. The Neighborhood Enterprise Zone is, uh, a tool that's really meant to possibly address tipping points, foster investment by owners, uh, pro, uh, into the property. Bring up the PowerPoint. Now, I gotta tell you, I took this down to nine slides, originally had 47, okay? So, there's, there's a lot of information here. Um, and I've given you some things, um, to, to look at. Public Act 147 of 1992 allows cities to do this, Southfield is on the list of approved cities. To be eligible for an NEZ certificate, the following conditions must be met, the city has to designate a zone. We're proposing the sections 34, 35, and the north part of section of 13.
What was, Fred, it was, um, Catelpa up to 13 Mile, Brentwood, Selkirk, Everett, and Marshall.
Okay.
The four blocks east of, of Greenfield, from Catelpa?
West of Greenfield.
Yeah, I'm sorry, west of Greenfield, thank you.
But north, but north.
North to 13, right. And that's where you have your highest concentration of northeast rentals.
Where all the dots are.
Yeah, you can, again, just... Well, then you need the price point, you can't do anything over 8,000 in true cash value.
I mean, shit, where's you from?
That's Timberwood.
So, the tool can be used for, uh, new construction, uh, we have vacant lots, you may have people who wanna come in and build it. This is interesting, the people will still pay the value on the land, but the millage rate that they're assessed on, there will be an assessment, is the state average tax. So our millage rate is 62 mils in that part of the city, they'll be about 23, 24 mils. Every year, the state computes an average tax, so there'd be a substantial savings there, uh, for someone. The, and I walk people through, the holder, the holder of a new construction certificate does not pay real property taxes collected under the general property tax, instead the owner pays the enter, the Neighborhood Enterprise, which is 50% of the state's average taxation rate, that's just under 24 mils right now. Land value with special assessments are not included in the tax abatement, so they'll still pay their, whatever our garbage rate is, if there's a special assessment for a storm, a sewer, they'll still pay that. Let's see. For, uh, existing homes, the rehab of existing residential structures, the certificates are available to the homeowners and landlords that meet the following criteria, must be, uh, for owners who occupy a single-family property as their principal residence, they, they need to reside there. The structure must have a current true cash value of 80,000 or less. If the improvements are to be completed by a licensed contractor, an owner occupant of the property must invest a minimum of 5,000 in rehab, uh, efforts of 50% of the true cash value, whichever is less. They're automatically, this, in the certificate, given six years. It can go up to 12-year, up to 12 years, and then there's, years 12 through 15, there's a step down in the formula. For, um, so 50% of the true cash value, the application that you have for a home stat, you can see in that application, um, document, that we fill in the blank to the, uh, to the state for the, regarding the number of years. So, as it's granted, and then my current thought process is, as we proceed, if you look on page two, uh, action taken by local empowerment unit, abatement approved for blank years, six through 15. So they're guaranteed that year, the first six, for the, just making the investment. My thought process, and I've got calls into other communities, uh, who are doing this, Grand Rapids and Lansing, I'd like to tie the investment to the additional years of abatement, the same way we handle our, our 198, our industrial tax abatements, the more they invest, the more jobs they create, there's an additional investment. Now, if the homeowner wants to do their own improvements, contractor, a minimum of 3,000 in materials must be invested, or 50% of the true cash value, whichever is less. Rental property, this gets real tricky, and it's, there's some things, as you read the legislation, Sue and I talk, that can you do it or can you not do it? And this is what I'm, what I seem to be coming down to, rental property with eight units or less must have a, uh, true cash value of 80,000, uh, or less per unit. So, this might be a future tool on an apartment community, or something that we're trying to make, uh, some changes. Uh, if the improvements are done by a licensed contractor, they must be 7,500 per unit, 50% of the true cash value, and then walks, kind of the same thing. So, the rehab tax incentive, the amount of the Neighborhood Enterprise tax on the rehabilitative residential structure is determined each year by taking the taxable value of portion of the property for the tax year, and goes, you subtract that, but it breaks down to, they're taking our existing mill and pretty much cutting it in half on the new investment. They'll still pay their special assessments, they'll still pay taxes on the land. These can be transferred to owners, they have to have the city's approval before anyone can start this program, they have to sign on with the city. Next steps, we need to, I'd like to just get a consensus to the zones, uh, we need to, uh, we need to have the planning commission adopt, adopt a statement of findings. When I looked at our master plan, there's enough documentation in there regarding our housing and neighborhood that this is a part of a developing, a sustainable Southfield, just engaging one more economic developmental, adopting ordinance and accompanying resolutions, uh, taking a look at... Taking a look at Lansing, and Grand Rapids ordinances are pretty straightforward. Resolutions, there'd be a fee on the homestead, $150, you know, some type of fee would be tied to that. We would put together application materials. I am recommending that we, as part of next year's budget, that we take our Housing Division, and I need to spend some more time talking, probably with council president, but my thought process is, we currently have housing, but I'd like to take housing and create a more formal merger with Neighborhood, Housing and Neighborhood Services, and possibly roll that within our Community Relations Group. I'd like to take that to our Neighborhood Services Committee and have that conversation. There's still, candidly, a lot of missing pieces we need to put together as we go through this, but we know this, we have parts of the city that are eligible, we have communities that are using the tool very successfully. The volume is very small. Last year, in 2014, for the entire state, there were only 15 pages of projects done, about seven, eight pages. And so this is something that if we can foster and get more people to invest in their homes, it causes a little bit more energy and investment. I think where this has real strong potential is in the South Central area, where you have a lot of vacant lots, and that this tool might foster and get someone to build new homes. When you work through the numbers, and, you know, basically, $100,000 home, true cash value to be built on a piece of property, would have a tax bill of $6,000, I'm sorry, would have a tax bill of $3,000. If you could take that to the state average, and they'd have a tax bill of 2,200, and worth the difference, that's enough to maybe get people to make that investment happen in the neighborhood. So, if we could, I'd like to come to a consensus on the proposed zone areas. The recommendation of the Neighborhood Services Committee, where the, what we call the South Central- Sections 34, 35, and then this area, and up to 13 Mile?
Right.
All right, I had it up to 12 Mile, I apologize. We're still very much, well within the 15% that we're eligible for. If you figure 26 square miles, by the time we take out the parks and that, we're well within that 15%. So we'd like to pilot this, we'd come back to council with an ordinance, the same time, concurrently run it through the Planning Commission for a statement of finding. And we would continue, you know, we'd start developing application materials and other documents.
Mr. Ferguson?
How come John Grace isn't, is it qualified?
Which one?
John Grace.
Oh, John Grace?
Yeah.
It, it does, but let-
Yeah, I don't know what that, can't see where the dark green is or-
Yeah, the, John Grace would be a potential area, but let me state this, this is kind of interesting, and I'm not, when we did the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone, Southfield was the only community in the state, and I believe the only community in the country, where the entire city qualified. And we had a large conversation about that. When we looked at the original numbers HUD gave us, all of their data would have steered us towards working in the John Grace neighborhood. Not a single home was chosen in the John Grace neighborhood with our N E Z. The only properties acquired in the John Grace neighborhood with our Neighborhood Enterprise Zones were the properties that we acquired for open space and clearing, Home on Seminole next to a city park. We bought the lot to expand that park. But nothing happened in John Grace. We have rebuilt the streets. If you look at the lower values that we have right now, the, these two, these two are some of the lowest. But we were looking here because of the plethora of the density, and then what we saw happening with the rental stock. We could certainly add another area.
Yeah, let me say this, if you look at the SIM card map in Detroit, it's almost right across the street from where you're talking about, the Southfield Road West.
Okay.
Outside of Redford Township, that area is the biggest problem right now in Detroit. So in other words, Eight Mile Road, you look at that map, and you look at, you know, looking at that map today is like reversing it to the south end of Detroit.
The north end.
The north end of Detroit. In other words-
Eight Mile Road's a mirror.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so, I would really think that that is really important to make something happen there, to stop, stop it from jumping to Eight Mile Road.
We, I would need to do the area calculation, we're probably well within that 15%, if that's the desire of council.
And of course, John, the body acres is really in need of that extra argumentals, sorry, body acres.
Let me, we made, if you look at some of our earlier infrastructure, water, sewer, street rebuilding, we have had some of our worst streets as part of our road rebuilding effort, where the apartment, south part of the city. But we started looking at our water main breaks and that, we saw that. So we have made substantial investments. This area, we've been in here, and I know we've been in John Grace, I think pretty much primarily south of Chiwasi, am I right?
Both sides.
Both? Okay. You know, so if you, if you look at, you know, and I'll use Ferndale as example, where they were at with their infrastructure proposal that, in the early 90s, real similar. We're both levying, actually, we're levying, they levied about four and a half mils for our road, we're coming in just under about the, what were, 255 mils, to rebuild our infrastructure. What we've done with our water and sewer, we're rebuilding that, we're relining. You've heard me say that, three years ago, your water loss was in excess of 20%. Now, you're down under 5%, what you're, what you're buying from Saco and what you're building for. So, we've really, our, we're doing what's historically in our control, investing in the infrastructure. We've got the public safety services, now if we can create some tools to maybe just pump a little bit more energy into the marketplace, and I believe that's what this is offering.
Mr. Mayor?
One of the reasons we didn't look at John Grace was, first of all, and this may not work, because it's voluntary participation. And you have to, not only do you have to own the house, but you have to be willing to put the money into the house. Some people may say, well, I'd rather just pay my taxes and not do anything to the house, or I'm going to sell the house, whatever. So, we don't, you know, we know that full well, that there are a lot of people that would not necessarily take advantage of this. But with respect to John Grace, what was it Fred, I think 16 homes were done there last year by Habitat?
And we, that were now three years in a row, 16?
Yeah, I mean, we, Habitat has poured a lot of money.
Rebuilt together.
And I've visited those houses, went down and worked with the team, and saw the really outstanding work that Habitat has done. And it mostly was interior, but it was roofs, even fencing, you know, all kinds of repair in the neighborhood. So that was, that was one of the reasons, because John Grace got the streets, the water mains, it got a number of Habitat projects. We're also looking at, one of the criteria was, we were kind of concentrating on neighborhoods that were built before 1960, our oldest neighborhoods, which John Grace obviously would qualify. But if we're going to get this off the ground, part of the stipulation of this is that we have to notify the other taxing authorities 60 days in advance. So that would be advance of July 1st. So we have to back up by the end of April to notify the county, the school district, and so on, that we're proposing this for the next fiscal year. So that, that puts a little bit of pressure on us to, you know, work this through, and that's, I think that's why the Chair of the Neighborhood Services Committee put this on right away, so that we could meet those deadlines.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
How many potential houses? And you just worked at the potential number, aesthetic? We really don't have a way to gauge it, but I start looking at some of the other communities, I think it's going to count on marketing, convincing people, showing people how the tool can work. Some of the cities are doing test, are having people give testimony.
Testimony.
Testimony. So as we go through, we really don't, we don't engage yet. I can tell you, from time to time, we've had people ask or inquiry, are you, are you using this tool?
Any other questions? I do, and Ken's partially answered it, you partially answered it too, and that is, it's a, that's a, shot in a dart, from the dart of the dartboard, how many people are going to take advantage of this?
It takes education, we have both to do some education, honestly.
I was going to say, it takes an extraordinary marketing to do this, and still, there may be people that live in those areas that say, you know, I really can't afford to put the money in my house. I'd like to do it, but I can't afford to put the money in my house. Also, if there, in 34 and 35, there are a lot of empty lots, there has to be a reason that nobody has built there before. You build on those empty lots, is this enough incentive to encourage people to build on those lots? I don't want to put a squash on this, I'm just trying to bring out some concerns of it.
I'm going to say, I mean, think of where Ferndale, Berkeley, and Royal Oak were, you know, where Royal Oak was in the late 70s. And it started with an infrastructure investment, you know, where Ferndale was in the late 80s, you know, Berkeley. And if you look at some of the values per square foot, part of this is creating a market. Before the crash, our real estate was transacting at $135 to $165 a square foot. Replacement values are about $115 to $135 per square foot. And that's the market we're trying to store, and, you know, part of it's a snowball effect in building confidence. People see someone putting a new roof, putting new windows in, adding a garage to the property, hopefully it builds some confidence for some people. You know, I think the two neighborhoods we've selected, the South Central, I think there's a certain appeal in the historical presence of that neighborhood. That is a very unique neighborhood, it is not a cookie cutter subdivision. So that may play into it, you could possibly appeal to people who are looking for older, more vintage homes, and they're getting tougher and tougher to find in southeastern Michigan. So, you know, I would be, you know, I would love to see, you know, if we could pull off five to six homes the first year, I would consider that as a success. But it's going to be market driven, we're going to have to market it. We'll go out to neighborhood associations, and kind of the same routine we did with N E Z, with the Neighborhood Enterprise, or the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, I'm sorry, I've been transposing that all night, with the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. We went out and spoke to neighborhood associations, and, you know, let people know what we're trying to do.
It's also a tool, my right, it's one of several things that we're trying to attack and stimulate regeneration in the neighborhood. And there's something else on the agenda, which is another, another piece of that, our rental home inspection program is another piece of that. The water, you know, all of these are pieces to try and renew our neighborhoods and bring the values up.
I appreciate all that, and there's, but I still see there's something that we have no control over, and that's the reputation of Eight Mile Road. And for people that want to invest in a brand-new house, to hear, you know, it's going to be a block from Eight Mile Road, I think might be a challenge for us to, I don't say that's an unwinnable challenge, but it's going to, I think it's going to take an extraordinary marketing effort to do that.
My answer too on that would be, don't sell us short, and also, people come here because of the services, it's safer, they know that the street's going to get plowed in the winter, the garbage is going to get picked up, that the police respond. I mean, I can, I live five blocks from Eight Mile, and my neighborhood-
But you, but you have lived there so long that you know the character.
But we have people who come in, I have over 50 new residents in the last year, and they're, they're coming in, and I know this because I'm the neighborhood membership chair, they come in because they know that this is a better place to be. And it doesn't, obviously, I didn't bring them in to the neighborhood, they made the choice to buy a house in five, six blocks off of Eight Mile.
Who picked the name South Central?
Who picked that? I did.
You know, I'd steer away from that, because when people hear South Central, they think Los Angeles. And that's, you know, that's not good.
Not a good thing?
No. I mean, that's the bad part of Los Angeles. Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah, Fred, did you see, I see on one of those screens, $7,000, and you could get in that zone and spend $7,000 and get your taxes.
Well, that's, that's the minimum investment, or 50% of the true cash value. So, we have to take a look at it. I would be shocked if the home was, you know, we'd be talking a $15,000 home, so we're talking 50% of that amount. But then the goal is, that gets you the first six years. If you want additional time, we're going to try to negotiate additional investment.
Well, I'm trying to say, $7,000 today, if you, you're talking about a roof, windows, and paint job, you're talking, you're blowing it.
Right, it's not much, I agree.
It's a contribution towards that.
Is it possible, I'm going to throw some crazy idea out there, you mentioned that some people may not even want to spend the money to fix up their home, even if they're getting a break in the back end. Is it possible, is it, I don't know if it's legal, that the city offers a low-interest loan, a low-rate loan to the homeowner, and then has collaborally, some people lean on the property, and then they can do some of that work, and then slowly pay off the-
Sounds like ship.
It really is, I mean, yeah. All the, the thing with ship is you have the income qualify.
Right. With the ship program, the income qualify, we do low-interest loans for our tree program, our septic sewer connection, there's-
I think what we're hoping to do is maybe, you know, develop some relationships with some banks, and have some creative programs with them, where we can have partnerships, and maybe have the banks give the low interest loans.
Community reinvestment program, you might want to talk with the banks about that, because that goes to low to middle-income people.
But that, that may, that may still exclude some, some people, depending on, even if their house necessarily isn't, you know, or high enough cash value.
They make too much money?
Right, they may make too much money.
But they couldn't call a ship either?
That's why we should have a separate-
I'm thinking of the income-based banks, I mean, just if you want to try to take that on as part of the program.
Anyway, that would be in favor of going forward with this program.
Any other questions? We'll go around the table. A consensus to, do we go forward with this and take the next steps?
Yes.
Ms. Madam?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Yes, be you. Yeah, be awful coming out of your committee and you say.
Mr. President, are the areas as we discussed, or?
We don't, why, why would we pick a new area? You've done the homework.
Well, there was a conversation about John Grace, that's, you know, I.
No, I would, I mean, wherever you decide, you did.
I'd like to pilot you first.
Wherever you decided, you know, selected in your committee, then you must have done some investigating, that's what you would do.
I, I like the areas, we piloted.
I can't defend what I'm saying because I don't know enough about it.
All right.
Yeah, John Grace might be a future.
Absolutely.
Now, we were going to take a five-minute break?
Yes.
I hope everybody, their watch is synchronized.
Yes. The, the next proposal, again, on Friday, on February 12th, Neighborhood Services Committee had a meeting and we had a discussion about tax foreclosure properties. Most of you are aware, I believe in the last two years, we've made three presentations to City Council pertaining to the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation and the refinancing of McDonald Towers and River Park Place. You know, that is an entity that went from losing about a hundred and seventy thousand a year, three, four years ago, to they're now operating at a profitable level, not losing every money each year and taking the properties through an eighteen million dollar renovation. With that, then the transaction also created a small windfall for the Southfield Nonprofit is that they're sitting on a little over ten million dollars. Our neighbor to the east of us, Hazel Park, a few years ago, in response to the foreclosure crisis, and now we're talking tax foreclosure. Each year, July, June, late June, mid-July, the city gets a list of properties that are being tax foreclosed by the county. The process in Michigan takes over three years for a property to be tax foreclosed. So every year, City of Southfield, late June, July, gets a list of fifty-plus properties that are going to be foreclosed. Some are single-family homes, some are condominiums, some are vacant lots, some are commercial properties. I want to shoot back over to Hazel Park on you. Hazel Park about three years ago realized that, and we are seeing a similar trend, that the majority of these tax foreclosure properties are being picked up by investors and that they are becoming rental property. In certain cases, people are moving in within two weeks of acquiring the property. The properties, there's no investment being made, they don't have a current certificate of occupancy, they're not in compliance with rental registration requirements. So the conversation Neighborhood Services Committee has had is, what can we learn from the City of Hazel Park? They created an entity, a nonprofit entity, that is working and acquiring from Oakland County's Treasurer's Office, the tax-foreclosed properties. They are taking those properties upon acquisition, doing an evaluation, is it a teardown, is it a renovation, and repositioning those homes donor occupancy. You saw earlier in one slide, what's happened with the rental stock in our single-family homes. Between the mortgage foreclosure crisis and then you throw in another thirty-five, forty homes a year that were, the properties are being sold and becoming rentals. I've heard different individuals who've attended the county auction say, I watched one person buy six, seven homes, all for, as an investment. So this is a program that's aimed at improving our housing stock and focusing on homeownership. The Southfield Nonprofit has agreed to capitalize the purchase. So tonight, I'm seeking a consensus that would allow the city to put together a joint venture between the city and the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation to facilitate the acquisition of these properties, renovation, and then the potential sale. Upon receipt of the list, that comes out every June 30th, I will have a team of city people, building department, do an inspection of every property. We'll walk by, pull the building files, we'll get photos, are the code violations, are there police and fire issues? We've been working a list of fifty-five properties. This summer, we actually pulled a list of the last five years worth of fires and we've been going through the status of every one of those homes. With this program, you know, we'll do evaluation of the home, but we're probably going to recommend that we acquire the bulk of the homes. Some will be demolitions every year. And the last year's budget, you actually have a line item now in code, a monthly budget of a hundred and fifty thousand. We typically tear down three, four homes. A lot of times, these homes are acquired by investors. When they see the condition, they don't get to go in them before. When they see the condition, sometimes they're just waiting another three, four years for the property to be lost again and go through this cycle. We had a home on Lois Lane that we acquired to two thousand and thirteen. Taxes had not, had not been paid in.
Ten years.
Ten years. And we knew that it was a demo. And I think the demo ran us just under twenty thousand. There was a pool in the house, a fuel oil tank that hadn't been removed. It was a very large house that had been severely fire damaged and the person doing, trying to do the renovation and that, it just never got done. So, you know, we're proposing this joint venture, you know, there will be challenges with this program. Every one of these properties, you get a, the title from the city, from the county will have to be cleared for finance purposes.
Right.
And we could find ourselves having to clear a large bulk of properties, thirty-five, forty at the end. We could find ourselves facilitating three, four demolitions. But I firmly believe the majority of the homes will be renovations. We have the volumes, a good size volume. We have, we've had a conversation, the mayor's had a conversation with Habitat for Humanity. They're willing to bring forward their contractors who are vetted. We'll probably have some other possible partners as we go through the process. Housing Community Network, another housing entity in Oakland County's expressed an interest. There could very well be other public-private partnerships that the joint venture between the city and the Southfield Nonprofit will work to assist us in getting through the rehab process quicker and getting these homes back into homeownership. You know, if there's a consensus, we'll begin pursuing the legal structure and conduit to make this happen, gearing up for when the list does come to us this summer. I've had a couple of conversations with Russ Gavin from Oakland County Treasurer, as well as Jody DePoe, about this. I can tell you Andy Meisner is asked to come in next Tuesday, at the 29th, to talk about the tax foreclosure, I'm sorry, the tax, the property, the February 29th payment deadline is his topic. But, you know, I, I think we've got a good model in what Hazel Park has put together. The volume, it's a good-sized volume, but I think with the right partnerships, we can pursue this, make it work. That's the concept in a nutshell. I think we're in incredible fortunate position of where the Southfield Nonprofit Corporation is. You know, I use the term that that entity is an alter eagle of the city. It's a closely held, you know, it's not under the jurisdiction of City Council, but we have a strong affiliation. We're, you know, I think you're very well of what they're doing with the Valley Rouge project and trying to pursue that. Trying to answer questions.
Mayor?
I just want to underscore what Fred has said and I want to cast these around. When I joined the Nonprofit Housing Board in 2010, the board met every three months. The buildings were poorly managed and if you complained, you were on your way to eviction. And through the last five, five and a half years now, we've turned that whole situation around. And to slightly correct Fred, we have invested nineteen point eight million dollars in rehabbing all of those units with new kitchens, new roof, new elevators, new common areas, new bathrooms, new windows, all of the issues that some of you that have been on council for a while will remember, we got complaints, the elevator wasn't working, no hot water, it's drafty, all those kind of things. We've totally turned these properties around. And it's, it's the right thing to do over there because, just because you're low-income doesn't mean that you, you should be relegated to living in a hovel or a substandard building. It's also something I've talked about all the time, the Southfield standard. If we're going to hold other apartment managers or owners to livable standards, we've got to make sure that the city-affiliated apartments are doing the same thing. So in this turning around, and Ari is on the, on the board as the councilperson and Fred is also on the board, we, now, the situation is totally flipped in, in five years. We're now sitting on a ten million dollar surplus. And the, for the first time, the Housing Board, which meets regularly now and has up-to-date data processing systems and so on, is now, wants to expand from the three apartment buildings, River Park Place, Woodridge and McDonald Towers, into its mission is housing, affordable housing. The difference between the program that we are proposing and the Neighborhood Stabilization Program is that this does not have an income cap on it. All those Neighborhood Stabilization Program, a lot of people were turned away here who could have, we could have sold a house to, but were not able to because they were over-income qualified. And think about it, wouldn't we rather have people who have, you know, we have a mix of people here as far as their financial background, but wouldn't we want to attract people who have maybe a more affordable family budget that, that they'll also, once they're in the home, will be able to maintain it and pay their taxes? So the letter, the Nonprofit Housing Board has voted on this twice to commit the money to this. We can't make a profit, but we can charge, let's say, a ten percent administrative fee to pay for the title searches and that would be part of the cost of, of turning the house over. It would be the, all of the rehabbing of the homes and as well as paying the fees and the taxes that are owed to the county treasurer. So our Chair of our Neighborhood Services Committee, Councilwoman Morris, and I met with Habitat a few, a month ago, a month ago now. And, and we were talking about housing initiatives because that, you know, was common language. And they said, we'd love to partner with you. So today, Scott Mulliken, as you can see, the Director of Operations, this is a letter of intent from them that they'd like to be at no charge to us, but they, you know, the Nonprofit Housing Board doesn't really have the capacity to hire contractors or vet them. So the Habitat would do that. What, what we have talked about at the Nonprofit Housing Board is that we would hire a contractor. But Habitat would be another set of eyes for us. And they'd also vet the people who were interested in purchasing the homes once they're rehabbed. And if you are, as, as we learned, if you are a, you get a Habitat home or a Habitat rehab home, you're a Habitat-er for life, as long as you live in that home. They have people that they connect with and they help them with, with family finances and budgeting and all kinds of support services so that, that start they get, that gift of a rehabbed or a brand-new Habitat home, that, that they can maintain it and stay in it. It's a, you know, it's a great thing. Habitat, as probably most of you know, loves working in Southfield because we have been very easy to work with, you know, we've extended ourself and that's why we have quite a few rehabs, rehab homes in Southfield. I think last time it was thirty-eight last year. Tremendous. And, you know, all of these things, like we talked about with the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone, all of these things are little pieces to, about neighborhood reinvestment. It's attacking a problem of aging neighborhoods through multifaceted avenues with the end result that we want to stabilize our neighborhoods, we want, want our housing stock to be improved. We don't want decline, we want to maintain our, our city appearances. And this, this is just another, another way to, to make this happen. And we're extremely fortunate that, given the obligations that we've already committed to with Northland and the property across the street, that we now have a funding source that will not come out of the city budget or taxpayer dollars. As a matter of fact, we will be able to reimburse the city for, for whatever services. So money will actually come into the city coffers through this program by our administrative fee. And I, the whole prospect of getting affordable housing for people that are not income limited, income limitation is usually around twenty-seven thousand, I think. That's what it is for McDonald Towers, River Park Place. You can't exceed that, which isn't a lot of money in today's world, especially if you have a car and insurance and all of that. So this, this program would not have that cap. And so I, you know, this has been something I've been working on for, for months and months and I'm looking for the council to support this project tonight so we can, we can go ahead with it.
Gotcha.
Fred, when you're talking about getting these foreclosed homes from the county, you're talking about a big number. Do you have a million dollars from the nonprofit? Is that right?
That's the initial amount.
Well, a million dollars is what's happening in years so far, maybe more than that, but whatever. How, what, how are you going to, to deal with what you acquired that would be different than the ones that we went on the neighborhood and got before? In other words, we had, we had a real problem. We've got a real estate company involved, we got, we got them sitting for a long period of time. I didn't agree with some of the things that the committee did in owning property themselves and businesses or houses. Are we going to, to make sure that we have a confident, stable system that we know that will work so that we can take forty houses, get them fixed up, get them on the marketplace and get rid of them? Because, you know, and I say this, I guess because I'm part of it, but government doesn't seem to get out of its own way. And we had the condos over there on Franklin Road and that was a mess. We got into this different thing, that became a mess. And, and I just wanted to make sure, I worked with Habitat too, as a matter of fact, they did one down in your neighborhood not too long ago. And, and, and they're great, they're great, but I'd like to make sure that we have the right selected group that is going to be able to handle these, get them fixed up. And I mean, that one on Virginia was a pain, your husband worked on that sucker, you know, until he got sick on it, you know? I mean, we had a fortune in that place, but we ended up getting a hundred and seventy-some thousand dollars for it though. But anyway, but it took us a long time and it was in the neighborhood and it was. the neighborhood, and it was, and even the neighbors were getting mad about it because it wasn't done in a way that, and I'll use the example, there's a home right next door to that one, two doors away from it, that caught on fire. It was almost a total, a fire destruction, they had two cars in the garage. They brought a team of people into that place, and I can't believe what they did to that house. That house looks better than it ever looked. It's immaculate, it's, I mean, they put windows, they, they put an entire new roof on it. And, I mean, I mean, but every day, you could see big changes, and they were like beavers. And, and I just wanted to make sure if we get into that, we have time to deal with that. In other words, we, I mean, we have a lot of things that are on our plate. And, and are we ready to take on something of this magnitude? That's all I'm trying to say. It's a great thing for our city. It works, it's great, if it, it helps, it stabilizes the neighborhoods, it stabilizes the city, but you gotta get in and get out.
And I think that's where we're going with Habitat and different other partners.
How many can they handle? The one down in Kent, they were working on it a long time.
We're gonna hire a contractor that the, the housing board will pay for, to oversee the work. The contractors will be vetted by Habitat, because they have that expertise. And, and the other thing, Don, is we don't have the income. There were people that wanted these homes, but they were over income. And that's gonna make a huge difference. It opens up a whole nother market for people, because you, you're, there's no, there's no minimum or maximum of family income that you have to deal with. That's, that, that's what's gonna move this along fastest. We're determined to make it work.
You say, "We are determined to make it work." What are "we"?
The nonprofit housing board and our, our partners.
Yeah, but you know, I mean, Ken, I, I'm not, I'm trying to be argumentative tonight, I'm just trying to say that you can't get plumbers, you can't get carpenters. Today's market is, you know, and they're way up there, a hundred dollars an hour now, because they have squeezed everybody out and not giving any, any new people any licenses to do carpentry plumbing. They've kind of shut everybody down, so that their wages can go up. And, and there's a shortage. I mean, I called the other day to get my door ball fixed, and I ended up having my son come over and do it, because the guy said, "I'll be there in a month." And I got the number from Durst, and he said, "Oh, this guy will get it right on it." And he said, "I'll be there in a month from now." I says, "You know, I can't wait a month." And, and, and I'm just, so I'm just trying to be real.
We don't even know how many houses that were actually.
No, but I'm saying, but the number forty was thrown up on the table.
That could be. You know, in the worst days, there were, there were a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty houses a year. Of course, number four closures, that all of that's changed.
Oh, it was in the hundreds.
Oh, yeah. I sat through it for hours.
But I mean, I'm not against it, I'm not throwing ice on it, I'm just saying, I wanna be sure that, that we have a team in place and don't, and don't neglect the city, things that have to be done, the day-to-day stuff, in-house, to take care of something that we really should be in the business to do. That's why these guys out there.
I can offer the couple, you know, the apartments on Franklin. Your biggest delay was market, private market failures, the two defaults, what it took to get those properties back. You know, so there's that. The NSP program, pretty much, by Detroit standards, is considered very successful. We are one of the few communities, most communities got their allocation and spent it once, because the way we worked that program, and that's what, yes, we did, we did have some additional carry costs, we were able to put, make that, that grant become just a little under ten million dollars. The, what was, I don't have exact numbers, what was originally about five millions. Most communities took their allocation, their first allocation, and spent it once. But because of how we timed some things, that did drive our carry costs. We also had a group, and if you remember when we had it, at one time, we had seventeen homeowners, all coordinating the work on seventeen different homes. We hit a snag when we, when we weren't able to get the financing. Even though they had letters that they were approved, we hit, we hit, we hit that snag, and we ended up having to do land contracts in order for them to get their first-time home. But there were some other pieces, but generally, when the program comes up, few communities took that money and parlayed it the way we did. Yes, you're correct, we had some carry costs, and there were some byproducts of cash flow and waiting for people to be able to get their mortgages in place. We worked a better part of a year helping make sure that people got their financing. So I, I get your point about the capacity.
But at the same time, you know, we got, we got picked on by auditorium by not being able to get the papers in on time and the papers done on those.
Not with any, not with the neighborhood enterprise zone?
Yeah. No, not the enterprise, not the NSPs, all the NSPs. Yeah. And so what I'm trying to say, I'm trying to be real. We have everything lined up and everything's smooth, and we take care of the city, and that is taken care of by these people. They're all accountable, and they get the job done. I see no problem with it.
The beauty of what's being proposed is, we don't have all of the, the crazy little regulations and rules. There were a few minor findings, but all of them were resolved and keeping in line with, with neighborhood stabilization. HUD was still promulgating the rules while we were administering it. And when you look at those findings, those were findings where the rules were promulgated after the grant was awarded. So there's another piece to that story.
You know, Fred, we were also given a piece from across the street in the city center, somewhere. The symbol is double oh seven, it's a little square, all right? And it still sits, and it belongs to us, it belongs to us, and nobody cares what happens to it. I know it's double oh seven, it's a little square, it's going between where the cancer building is and, and all these parking lots come together, and then there is a square. And we accepted it from the county. And, and, I mean, I'm trying to say, how did it get through the cracks? Just get rid of it. Give it to anybody who's parking out of transit, and let them pay taxes on it or something. All I'm trying to say is, I just wanna make sure that if we get into something, that we get into it. You know, the piece across the street, still screwing around with that, you know? And it doesn't take much. I mean, I'm telling you, if Sapporo would've come over here and I told him, "Develop that piece of property across the street," it'd have been done. Let him worry about who he's gonna lease it off to, and who they're gonna, what he's gonna build. I mean, you know, I, I just, I just think that it's, it's not our game. Buying property and making use of it is not our game. Our game is servicing the community with public safety and roads and water and all these good things. That's our job. And we, and we do an excellent job of it, because that's what we know. We get into this other world, it's great, and it has its good benefits, but if it doesn't really, it runs smooth, it becomes a negative. That's all I'm trying to say.
In that case, then you don't do anything, because something bad might happen. I mean...
But, but, Ken, you know, it does go bad.
This is not going, the city's part in this is holding the title and clearing the title. That's, that's it.
Yeah, and sponsoring the program. That's, that's about what I see in Habitat from humanity, or Habitat, Habitat. The, you wanna know how many buildings can they take on? They're not even, from what I understand, they're not gonna do the work. All they're gonna do is vet the contractor. So we're gonna get the contractors, so, so they'll be a peripheral part of, of this whole thing. So we clear the title, sponsor the, sponsor the program. Now, the one question is, inspecting the homes, and we can do that if we can get access to them. And I don't know how we get access to them before they're on the market.
It may be simply visual inspection code, building, whatever records we can quickly pull. We won't, we'll not be able to get inside of the house.
That's right.
And that's anyone who's buying that home. And think about that. If the house has six feet of water in it, mold, you know, if you can't see it from the windows, I would rather us take it on and just get it demolished, than let it go through the cycle again.
All right. Mr. Raywell.
I have a very simple question. I figure it might be answered by the mayor or through you. I know the Southfield, okay, nonprofit has given us one million dollars, but...
That's a starting figure. They have ten million dollars.
Okay. Initially, do, does it cost the city anything? Are we, are we on the...
And they're on the, there is an administrative fee. You can't make a profit per se. In other words, you can't turn around, according to the Oakland County Treasurer, you can't turn around and sell the house, because the house down the street sold for a hundred and fifty, and you've only put ninety thousand into the house. You can't sell for a hundred and fifty. You'd sell it...
Well, you could, but the profit goes back to the county treasurer.
Yeah. So we're not interested in making money for Andy Meisler.
My only question is, are we liable for things?
Well, you'll have liability as a landowner during the time that you own the property. So, whatever. But, you know, we insure those things, they'll go onto our property insurance and, you know...
And you insure the properties that the Southfield Growth Corporation owned as part of the NSP program.
Yeah, yeah. And if there's a fee generated for that, that'll go into our costs and...
And even the time, by time, Lynn and I had the conversation, there will be a cost allocation plan, that even the time that council is spent on this, will be charged to, against that income. We'll figure out how to optimize the liable expenses.
Number, number nine, okay. Mr. Raywell.
The people that are vetted, we're vetting them, we'll have Habitat for Humanity vet the contractors and the potential homeowners, is that correct? But there's no, it's open for anyone, there's no income at all.
They just, they're gonna have to prove that they can afford to live in the house, purchase it and live in the house for five years.
So is there, is there a way to stop someone from buying the house and then renting it out?
That's gonna be part of the contract. You can't do that with a Habitat house.
So these will all be considered Habitat homes?
Right. There are minimum five years that they have to live in the house.
Okay. What would stop the county treasurer, he knows we're gonna go in and buy all the homes at auction, what would stop him from extending the taxes or the non-tax?
Well, he knows that we're gonna do this. Like, he knew this six months ago that we're the...
Right. But, but he can extend the non-tax, he can give extensions for non-tax payments and then charge them.
See, this only comes into play once he has foreclosed and he has title. He, he gives payment plans while people owe the taxes to him. Once he goes through in February and March and he gets his, his foreclosure, and then he perfects his title in April, he now owns the property. There's nobody to delay it. And the statute says in June, he has to give the state of Michigan right of first refusal to buy that property. After the state passes, then it comes to the city. We have right of first refusal. That's why the nonprofit can't go in on its own and do this. But, but by that point, now, he could thwart it, I guess, if he didn't take him to foreclosure. He could say, if for some reason, if you're posing a situation where you think he might thwart, he would just never take him to foreclosure and just keep giving payment plans. But the problem is, he makes his money back when they go to auction. You know, and that's when he makes his money.
Well, and that's, for, for him to extend that too, also costs thus an attack revolving fund, because that becomes a deduct on what's been forwarded to the city on taxes. And I will tell you, that's a future topic with the county treasurer's office, these homes that are beyond three and four years.
Why they're not foreclosed, right.
Because that's part of the situation with our vacant housing stock, is they're sitting in this limbo state. And there's also, you have the hardest-hit money, and a lot of money was loaned at a very hefty interest rate to people. And some people are, are making like fifty-dollar-a-month payments on twelve-thousand-dollar loans, just some crazy things that... But, but that's gonna create a spike in the tax foreclosure list eventually.
Right. Well, I'm just trying to figure, you know, what would stop him from charging the high interest if he keeps extending payment plans? If he knows that eventually the city will come in and buy it, just a thought.
The only thing I would say is, at least he, he gets his money. He doesn't know, I mean, if we, when we come in in June, we have to pay the full amount of the taxes, all of his penalties, he's made totally whole. He doesn't know whether in the two tax sales that are coming, that that property will sell. If it, at the first auction, that's what it gets bid for the minimum for, all the taxes that are owed. But if it doesn't sell at the first auction, because nobody wants to pay that, it goes to the second auction in October, then he puts any reasonable value on it. He loses money there. Yeah. So for him, the best deal would be to get his full, all of his eighteen percents for, I mean, so, we're gonna do that in June. We step in and we're gonna pay him his full amount. That's a good deal for him. Unless there was some other reason that he didn't want the city. I, I think it's a good monetary deal for him.
Well, I'm just thinking, if he's getting this eighteen percent interest.
But remember, once he forecloses, he doesn't get the, yeah, I mean, he, it's his then. Now he's got to sell in an auction. Right. Now he's got to sell in an auction.
We would think that he would want to get rid of the foreclosure. He surely...
That's why he puts those green auction signs up all over.
Right, right.
Yeah, he, and for us, it's better for us, in this plan, now that we've got a funder to fund it for us, it's better for us to get it than some landlord to buy it, so, you know, some speculator to buy it, turn it into another rental property.
I, I agree. I'm just playing devil's advocate.
Okay.
It's early.
It's early?
Mr. Longberg.
The problem is, though, that if the county treasurer knows that he's going to have a buyer, and, let's say, for example, five years of extensions that are getting made at eighteen percent interest, and he knows we're gonna come in and, and step in and buy that property, he'll keep extending it for the five years at least, and not foreclose it for two, three years, that he's supposed to, because he'll get eighteen percent for those extra years and be a hero to keep extending.
Maybe on those, we wouldn't buy one that have gone for five, six, ten years. Maybe we'd let those go.
We have to be careful. If he, if he has a point check from us...
That's what he told me. He told, he told me, "I'm gonna work with Southfield. I, I, we don't wanna collect these houses." And I know, you know, I'm, I'm helping a woman right now who's, hasn't paid her taxes since, I think, nineteen ninety-nine or something. She owes twenty-three thousand, and they keep putting her on a payment plan. We're not taking that woman's house. We're taking the houses that are, you know, they're done, and they're on his books.
My, my concern is that we should be able to hold, have an accounting from the county treasurer of exactly all the extensions, and I've asked for this, and unfortunately we haven't been getting it, is how many extensions are being given, and how long are they giving that for?
They're, I agree with the treasurer. We, the count, there needs to be a higher degree of accountability. I mean, I gotta say, at least this treasurer is dealing with this. His predecessor wasn't foreclosing on any. You know, so, and then he has had this hardest-hit money, that there's an incentive for him to use that. You know, and if we can get people through the crisis we were through, that can be a good thing. But I, I do think, I, I know this, the county's putting in new software to help them with their accounting and their rears, and this is, this very topic is gonna be a conversation that annually we need to be reviewing. And any home that isn't moving within three years, we should ask why. The other thing is, when the county treasurer comes in and talks about the numbers, you know, they'll give you the numbers for all the taxing jurisdictions. "Well, I brought this amount of money in for Southfield." And I was like, "Wait a minute, only thirty-five percent of that is Southfield. The rest of it's the schools, the zoos, art, the county." They play, they play really loose, and you don't get that segregation on the accounting. Herb's been in those, you know, so, we're gonna continue to monitor that situation. The county, their statement is, their biggest concern is probably how the joint ventures organize. You know, they made reference to another community, they said, "You don't wanna see it like that." They do like the Hazel Park Mall.
Okay. Any other questions? Consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You stay up there, unless you're gonna do it from your chair.
Which one's next?
We're not playing.
Oh, I'm gonna let, oh, okay. This one's a little... This one's a little cloak and dagger. We have a, a research and development company that is, would like to use the northeast corner of the Northland site, entering to a short-term ground lease. Can we tell them anymore about the company?
Did, did they ever get the slide you were gonna give us?
No, we did not receive that. So this company is an R and D facility that's in the city of Southfield. They're an international company, but they have a stronghold in our community. And they are looking for some temporary space to lease so that they can do some testing for their product. This space, if we do choose to lease to them, we feel that it'll help us create a stronger relationship with them. They have a large presence in the community. There's an opportunity for them to expand their facility in our city and have a much larger presence in the community. In the interim, it would provide the city with some funding to help underwrite the cost of our expenses that we're incurring with Northland Mall. So as we look to fence off a portion of the property, we could designate this specific area to this company. Again, it would not interfere with any work that we're doing as we look to redevelop the property and any demolition that might occur. There's plenty of ample space along in the other parking areas that are open where we could store perhaps potential fill or with the demolition, any scrap or, or product that we wanted to dispose of in the short term. And this, this company would be very flexible. So again, we would have the opportunity to end any agreement that we had should another opportunity come forward, you know, as we're working on redeveloping it. But the city has been very aggressive in our timeframe. We've gone through all the environmental. We, we did a RFP to bring in a planning consulting company, RQ, to help us determine who's gonna help lead the city council and the DDA into what direction we're gonna redevelop this property in. But all of that does take time, and so we might as well capitalize on this and use that available space. It's really valuable space right now, especially for this type of R and D. So the, once, if the city council were willing to entertain this option, the company has a couple of alternative locations that they're exploring as well. And obviously, once the opportunity is finalized with this company, they are willing to open up the location for students to come and work with the company and learn what the techniques that they're testing at the facility. They'll be happy to, you know, open it up so that the community can get an idea of what's going on at the location. But just at this time, until the city council, if they decide that they're interested in exploring it, they ask that we kind of keep it on the down-low, so...
So approximately ten acres, the northeast corner of Greenfield, just south of JL Hudson Drive. They're also, would like to, the site will be fully fenced, screened, as well as use the garage, part of the garage at the old power station.
Right, and, yeah, and they'll pay for their portion of, you know, the workout arrangement. They'll have security at their location.
A map that you can show us where that would be?
It's off where the, the mini station is.
Mini what station?
The mini police station. It's right adjacent to the mini police station.
Well, no, it's that you can point where Northland is.
So it's, it's the...
It's not where Firestone was?
No.
No. It's, so if you know where the mini police station is, it would be just adjacent to the mini police station.
How many square feet?
It's ten acres, so it's the whole parking lot. It's, it's just a big parking, parking lot. They won't interfere with any, any redevelopment plans.
What are they gonna do, build a building?
No.
No.
Just testing.
They're just...
Testing.
Testing.
Well, let me, let me see if I can muddle this up even more. They've asked us not to use their name because of confidentiality. The description that Shelley has given and, and Fred have given says that they need about ten acres. It will be screened in. It will be, it will not inhibit in any way the work that we have to do with the demolition or any work that has to be done over at Northland. It's free space. They're willing to pay a lease to us and this will help offset some of the costs that we are incurring for security and other things that are going on. So whatever we get, and we haven't worked out, we haven't negotiated a, a price at this point, but they're willing to sit down with us and work with us on, on the, on the point. But the key thing is, we can't talk anymore about what they do other than they've asked us to be, to not use their name because of the confidentiality and the kind of work they do. So, and that's why they have to screen in, screen in and, and cover the screen, the fencing.
So they're gonna have something to, to close, enclose what they're doing?
They're gonna put a screen over the fence so that people can't look in.
Okay. Not a building, not, not trailers?
They're not gonna build anything permanent. They may, they may construct something on a temporary basis, but it will not in any way inhibit what we're doing over there.
And it won't be anything going into the ground and thinking, okay.
No, it won't be noisy. It would be an operation that would be from Monday to Friday, regular work hours.
And it's not Jordan.
It's a hundred percent legal, yes. It's a legal operation. And it'll be just during the work hours and it'll just be normal employees coming to the facility to, you know, work on their project.
So...
Those of us that are on the committee, you've recommended.
Yes, right. Yes, we, on the, on the Northland Committee, we did recommend that we go forward with this lease because it's money we wouldn't have. And it offsets the kind of monies that we're, we're laying out on a monthly basis for...
And it helps foster a great relationship with the company that we're hoping will continue to grow in our city.
I support this. I make a motion if we proceed.
Well, okay.
I have a question.
I love you, Dan.
The, the, the money that's generated, is that gonna go back into whatever funds we're currently paying?
Tax-based initiative, just like the monthly campaign we see from Target of twenty-three thousand a month.
Okay. Let's do it.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Brewell, support from Ms. Morris.
Are you doing a rule ten?
Huh?
Are you doing a rule ten? If you're taking a motion.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Well, we wanna, yeah, I guess we're gonna, we'll do that so we can move on.
Said that officially you have...
Al can move on with...
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move to the rule ten.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Fricassi and supported by Mr. Malabon that we have an immediate need to act. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, this is Carrie.
I make a motion if we proceed with this.
It's been moved by Mr. Brewell, supported by Ms. Morris, that we move forward. And we approve this secret plan. That will bring us money.
Sounds terrible.
Is there any question? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, this is Carrie. One of these days, you'll all know what it's about.
Thanks very much. And again, so this is, they're considering, I think this was their first choice, but they're taking it up to their leadership next, in the next couple of days. And so I'll be back and give you the information after.
Okay. Now, Al, you're gonna negotiate the...
Between Fred, Sue, I, and Shelley, we'll negotiate the lease.
Okay, so, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
See, I told you it was gonna get real tense, for the right reasons.
And you actually initiated both of them.
Yes, right. Item number seven. We finally worked our way toward the end of our official agenda. Installation of the art sculpture in the Roundabout located on Evergreen Road at Civic Center Drive. Who wants to start off with that?
I'll start off with it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, um, feel that it's important to know that, first of all, the city accepted a piece of art.
Yes.
Without its location to be in the future. Is that correct?
Right.
Shout me out.
Yep.
Since that time, it has been stated that, that this piece of art shall go on the island in front of the Civic Center in the Roundabout. I have, I'm very concerned about it. I, I, I know, I know the person. He sits on the arts board. I, I just feel strongly that this ought to go... You know, this is not, the arts board is not something new. You can see my pile here.
This one's new.
But the Business Consortium of Arts, the Business Consortium of Arts, they, they made a recommendation back then in ninety-four that, that they, they developed a list of potential artists to be invited to compete with opportunity and funding to supply this sculpture. Organized blue ribbon judges to select a short list of artists to be invited to compete. The judges would be a prize to business, city, and art people. A firm understanding of that is necessary for a fashionable piece of art. I, I just feel very strongly that, that this piece should have been gone to, to a judge. I think that the commission that, that was formed, I, I think, in my estimation, it was part of it, but it was formed in a manner that I really don't believe it should have been formed in that fashion. And the reason I say that is, is because since inception, and this piece of art came to the city, it was destined to be, whether you believe it or not, it was destined to be in the Roundabout. And, and that was, I guess, what the giver thought it was gonna be. Well, I think at that time, it should have been collected and clarified that, that if it won any selection process, it's fine. If it was not, then, then we should have the opportunities it's gifted to the city to put it wherever we wanted to. But anyway, to make the long story short, when I say that the commission was ill-formed, is that I went back into, to what I really believe it should have gone back to being, is, is under Parks and Recreation and not under the planner. And I say that because the planner's got enough work to do. But back in, in the budget of, of eighty-eight, you go under the Parks and Recreation, you'll see we had a cultural arts coordinator. And a coordinator is different than just a, a commission that was put into place because a arts coordinator coordinates all art, paintings, musicals, art fests, the whole kinds of things, things like this, you know, it was done back in eighty-three. It was the biggest thing happened. We had over a thousand, two thousand people here on site. But they're working it every single day, finding new people to bring to the city, art shows, art festivals, symphonies, the whole series of things. What happens is this is said only to, to one form of art. And, and, and the thing that has surfaced is that it became now the principle of just finding one piece of art, not the, they did an inventory of all the art supposedly in a city. I found Mr. Redstone and told him what the one over at Beechwoods was and, and, 'cause they didn't know it, and the survey doesn't understand, know what it is. But anyway, I, so I feel very strong that, that this piece of, of art, it may, it may have all the, you know, value there. It may have the individual sculpture, the person there to, to say how special it is. But it does separate the city, you know, as, as Carrie said, at the time when you showed it on that map the other day, you know, already placed in that circle, already committed to there, that when I talked about having a, the judges, Business Consortium or a committee, look at all kinds of art, well, he said, well, you can do that on the south end or the north end. You know, so in other words, everybody has already placed that piece of art in that, irrespective of what the purpose of getting art into the city is, is that this piece of art was destined to be in that Roundabout. And I just feel very strong that there are things that are personally attached to that piece of art that make it something of a memorial. And I said that the other day, that in the right's away of the city, that those things that are placed in that should not be in the memorial, but should be art, whatever it is. And, and so then I read the individual's little letter, that it's not a memorial. And then I hear where, I will leave the name out, a memorial art fund is where the placing and the money is being come from, so it is a memorial. Then they talk about what the, what the color of, of it shall be, even to the point where, where the color of what it is painted. And then, then you go back into, uh, some of the writings here, and, and the person who is gifting it to the city asked his children, you know, what color she, would they like it to be, blue or red? Then they said, well, it's gonna be now a different color. It's gonna be now the same color as the, uh, the San Francisco Bridge, I guess.
Golden Gate Bridge.
National Golden Gate Bridge. Again, you know, there's, there's a connection. And I, and I just kind of feel that if that's where we're going in the city, then, then it's not gonna be what we really think it is. It's not gonna bring that real art into the city, and it's not gonna blossom into what it used to be. It's, it's gonna be self-serving art. And, and city's gonna be part, part of it. And Mr. Shea, and that's the one that Mr. Lance was talking about, Mr. Shea used to come in front of the council years ago with paintings. And we used to get them and get them and get them, and he'd write them off, and he'd give them and give... They were all over the city, and all of a sudden, they all disappeared somewhere. And Mr. Shea, if that's, you remember. And, and I guess I come back from, from, from really wanting to do, and, excuse me if I pompous in saying it, I want things done right. I want things done right. And there's nothing wrong, this city is a great city, has always tried to do the right things, and it's been good at what it does. And it stayed out of politics. It stayed out of special interests. It stayed out of a lot of things. All of a sudden, you know, all, everything's starting to move in that direction. And I'm saying, you're gonna go down the shore if you continue to do that. You just started, because other people are gonna say, well, they've been slighted. I don't wanna get involved in that. And we had, you know, we had Luthius from Bendix, set up the whole Business Consortium. We had people within, and, and they actually were paid by the, by the city in Parks and Recreation. They set up, every day they were concerned about this, they set up and bought Benet David, you know, and set that up as an arts facility. But things and, and decisions made, just like when they decided, oh, we're gonna get rid of it. Well, what they did is they, they did get rid of it. But you know what they did? They, they sold it cheap, number one, and then they gave the guy a liquor license. You know, a liquor license worth a hundred... You know, a liquor license worth a hundred thousand dollars, put the liquor license there and sell it with the liquor license. I mean, but all these things have no thought, it's just like, somebody decides, we're going to do this, and, and it's whoosh, and it happens. So, so I don't want to get into personalities, and I don't want to get into this stuff, and council are all grown up, and they can make a decision, but I'm telling you, if you continue to go down this stream, you know, it's, it's not going to be on a soft rock. Because it's got to be put together, and, and the pattern had been there, and Mr. Fader, Mayor Fader, Judge Fader, started it way back at the Arts Council, and, and put this package together, and, and it worked, it worked. And, and we became very noted throughout the whole area. I mean, we were bigger than Ann Arbor Fest, we were bigger than Plymouth, I mean, you a neighbor, everybody came here, but we don't even have Jazz Fest anymore, we don't have this anymore, we, I mean, but there's nobody that just says, is my job is to meet with the state arts group, bring, bring some outdoor arts here, displays here, giving wildlife here, arts, I mean, we used to fill this thing with wild, we used to have the trout show here, we, you know, the convention was going and going and going and going constantly. And, and I'm saying, but it's because a lot of people got involved in the arts and brought arts to thing, Joan with the Scandinavian symphony, I mean, we had it here in the Pillars, it was beautiful, you know, we brought, we the people here, we brought, with Smith here, with, it used to be at the Bad Child in Belle Isle, for, for, we had up with people, I mean, they were a national, national group. We did a lot of things here that were, you know, we brought Wilson here, Nancy Wilson, we brought Lou Rawls here, I mean, but it was done because a whole lot of people were involved in different kinds of arts. And, and because of that, it made us strong, and that's what this so-called arts brain, economic development is all about. Once it gets personal, it fails, just like anything else. That's my comments, and whatever council wants to do with that, I just, just want to tell you where I'm coming from, and anybody wants to borrow this and show how it really ought to be done, it's there, it's there. It's cookie cutter, it's right there. And, and I've never been embarrassed by what they did.
Okay. Mr. Cruz.
Mr. President, I think you, you worked here at the last meeting, that we discussed this, this item, and we did a prolonged discussion, and then some back and forth of memorials and such. In the past, a week or so, we have gathered some additional information about this piece to clarify where the piece came from, the donator of it, the fact that it is not a memorial to anyone individual. We talked about color schemes, Terry actually gave us a schematic, a visual of how it looked, and I, and I think it was a lot of good work put into that, so you see, you see it coming back today. And the recommendation as read here in the memo is that council accept this piece refurbished, repaint, sculpture in the international orange that was suggested by the Arts Commission as well as install the sculpture, gratitude in the Roundabout, which also was suggested by the, by the, by that same group. And I think it deserves a bid on vote, it was asked for immediate need to act under this, so I would like to move a little tent to that we adopt this recommendation to act tonight.
Support. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Cruz, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we find an immediate need to act. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Getting scary. Now I need another motion.
Can, can we have any discussion?
Look, the motion, if we do it right, you put the motion on the table, then you have the discussion.
Right.
We always do it wrong by having all the discussion first, and then we do the motion. So.
So the second motion then would be installation of art in the Roundabout?
Mm-hmm.
At the Evergreen, City Center Drive, report.
It's been moved by Mr. Cruz, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we accept the recommendation to install the piece of art that was donated to the city in the South Roundabout, Civic Center, and Evergreen. Is there any discussion? Ms. Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
Several things bother me about this, I think that this very prominent location of the Roundabout should be a competition. But the other thing that bothers me about this piece is that I think it's going to be a distraction, a huge distraction in the Roundabout, because it doesn't fit, it's very unusual, people, it, to be distracted is bad enough to be in a Roundabout, I mean, the way people drive, but I, I really do fear on two levels. One is what's proper, the other one is, I think it's presents a distraction that could become dangerous. And that to me is a big concern. I don't mind it being on the front hall, front lawn of City Hall, but I think to put in the Roundabout something that was given to us without having a competition is wrong, and I am concerned that this will be a distraction. It's crazy going around those things, somebody's going to look at it, say, what is it, and be distracted, and I do have that fear, and I can't, I can't support the way we're doing it. Like I say, put it in the front of City Hall, we can have other pieces of art, but to put it in that site, and the orange, international orange, that's, Oakland County trucks are that color.
No, there are, no, there are. The, the Golden Gate Bridge is red.
Well, they don't want red, they want orange.
Well, it's a, it's a reddish, it's more reddish than it is.
And, and so we want to be part of the Golden Gate Bridge by, I don't.
It's only the color.
I know, but I, but my concern is, I don't know what entitles these people, or whoever, what suddenly makes this the thing that has to go in the Roundabout, the first piece of art we put out there is something, something donates to us, I agree with Don, there should be a competition.
But we just don't want it to go without.
But I am, just a moment, I, but I really am concerned that this is going to be a distraction, and it's going to be dangerous, and so I will be voting no.
Okay. Mr. Mandelbaum.
I spoke with a friend of mine who sits on the Arts Commission, and he's an international arts dealer, and he also, he said that this piece is perfect, once it's refurbished in the way that they proposed setting it up, that it would complement the city and really help as a, quite a true smart move. So I, I am in favor of this.
Ms. Morris, did you want to?
Well, no, I was just going to say that Councilman Fakasi had mentioned all of the paintings that had been donated by someone years ago, so I don't see what the problem is by having someone donate a piece of art.
There's nothing wrong with that, it's the prominent location of being in the, in the Roundabout, the most prominent location in our city. That's the issue.
You said that you didn't see why somebody would be donating.
I didn't say, I didn't hear what you said.
You said you didn't understand why somebody would be donating a piece of art, that's what I thought I heard you say.
No, I didn't say that at all, we've had a lot of art donated in our city over the years, a lot of it. That's, that's wonderful, that's fine, put it on the front lawn of City Hall, because you can put some things there, but to pick, to pick the Roundabout for something that's quite unusual, it's going to be a distraction. And I'm, I'm opposed to this, simmering this out, somebody gave us something, and so we need to put it in a very common place because this person is well-known. This is, this is not a good decision. And, and I think it's going to be a danger. But we've had a lot of art donated over the years, a lot, a lot of it's disappearing.
Mr. Mandelbaum.
Just a quick question, will we be putting a, obviously not in the Roundabout, but maybe in, for even conventions, a sign explaining what the piece is and something about the artist?
Your Art Commission is going to label all of this in the library, everything, put an art plan, ours, that's one of the charges, there any sort of markers for it? Perfect.
Any other, any other comments? Because I want to make a couple of comments. One of the comments that Mr. Fakasi made about having the original Art Commission back in eighty-eight, when we first discussed this Art Commission, I threw into the conversation, what about art in, in pictures, you know, you know, art paintings, paintings, what about music, what about, you know, dancing, and, you know, the, and it was clarified to me that this was public art only. So this is, this Art Commission deals with public art only. I would like to have an Art Commission as we did years ago, because I was on tail end of, I was, I came in on the tail end of that, but that includes hiring someone from the ci, from the city to be a coordinator of all these different kinds of art. And at this point in time, I don't think we have the funds that would allow us to do that and attract the, the kind of artists that we did when we did have Lou Rawls and Nancy Wilson and, and the other artists over at the, what's that, the Schreiner's place now, that we owned at that, at that point in time. Maybe we can work toward that to have an Art Commission that will handle all of these, but what we have now is public art only, so this is what we have to deal with. And perhaps in future years, we can work on expanding it to have a culture center, an art culture committee that will deal with the other things. But right now, this is, this is what we're, we're dealing with. It's also my understanding that the north of Roundabout, it was discussed to have a contest, to, to have the Art Commission pick a couple of three pieces of art, and then have the community involved in voting on that, and, like they do in Grand Rapids, and whatever the community decides they would like to see in the north one would be the contest. Now, I don't know if there was any discussion on what happens to the winner, you know, does the winner get anything for it other than the honor of having voted the right way? But, you know, that remains to be seen on that one. We have to deal with the South Roundabout right now. And I am not as concerned as, as Ms. Seymour is with the distraction of going, screw drunk, but the art is going to be that much of a distraction, I'm sure that it will end up being a point of reference if people are from out of town, and they, they'll use, the people here in the city will use that as a point of reference on how to find the City Hall and, and all, so I'm, I am not as concerned about causing accidents as, I have a lot more faith in our drivers, even though they sometimes disappoint me. So if there are no more, is, is there any other discussion? Seeing no more discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Let the record show that there are five yays and two nays. Okay? That completes our, I have one, one more piece of information that wasn't on our agenda, and that is, if you recall that I asked the three people that report to us to summarize their nineteen, their two thousand and fifteen work actions, next Monday, I would like you to bring your schedules, because we want to pick some available days that we can start the process of meeting with the three, the three people, one at a time, and discuss the information that they've given us, and set up goals and objectives for two thousand and sixteen. So next Monday, you would bring your available dates that you can meet, day, night, whatever. And I appreciate the fact that you're putting pressure on me, my wife has passed the time now where I need to, I feel that I need to be there the most of, most of the day, so I have more free time out than I can do this. Okay?
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's sold out free time, are you, you looking at two weeks from that, from Monday, or what time frame are you looking at?
It will, it can be any time after next Monday that we can all agree on that, and we're going to start with our city administrator.
Sure, sure.
You'll be the first person.
Oh, we do separate days?
The, the three people will be done on separate days.
Oh, you should.
Yes, and I expect that we should block out about a two, a two-hour block of time, so when you come with your, your schedule, the days that you can meet, calculate about two hours, okay?
Are you thinking different days, different days, Myron?
Pardon me?
Different days for each?
Yes, I don't want to do it all in, one right after the other. We'll do two hours with our city administrator, then we'll get a better feel for how long it really is, is going to take, maybe the second one, we can block out maybe an hour.
So you want dates from us when we can meet?
Yes, that's what I want you to bring, next, next Monday, our dates that are open, that you can meet, so we can kind of put our heads together.
Daytime or evening?
Either, either, bring up, so that, some people will not be able to meet during the day, so we can scratch those out, and, okay?
Got it.
And not to be discussed tonight, but we also have a request from the school board at a joint meeting, and Lathrop City Council would like to meet with us principally to discuss Southville Road, so that we have a, a shared vision. So I'll just throw that out.
Okay.
Those are a couple of other dates we're looking for.
All right. And one other thing too is, I don't know, I think we all got the message, is tomorrow night is Founder's Day for the, for the PTA.
It's sold out.
It is sold out?
Yeah.
Even though we've got tickets?
I only have tickets for six people that responded to our RSVP.
Okay.
I don't know if you can get tickets.
Well, I thought you had tickets in the city clerk's office.
No.
Okay.
It's sold out now.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. Now comes time for our communications portion, and you have three minutes, Ms. Gerald.
Oh, I thought we were on four.
You have three minutes.
Okay.
Cool, anytime.
Everyone knows that I am concerned about settling the employee contracts. I'm going to go back and say the visioning session was very nice, inspiring, encouraging, but no employee contracts. Now, I'm hearing our city administrator say, it's no money. I'm hearing the city administrator say retiree insurance. And I'm looking at the Northland proposed budget. Now, if my figures are wrong, I stand to be corrected, and you can address it at any time tonight, since we're not in a hurry. Two point four to purchase the property, eight to fifteen, maybe twenty million to tear it down. Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Target. I'm just looking at all of these expenditures, and I'm just baffled as to how you could spend two point four million dollars to acquire something, and it costs you all this money to maintain it until you tear it down, and until it's developed, or until someone buys the property. Two hundred thousand dollars for security, what about our police officers? A hundred and fifty thousand dollars for fence, is this a gold fence? Is this a fence with barbed wire? It's almost like you didn't even think about all of this when you purchased the property. So I'm going to yield some of my time to see if you would be willing to answer any questions. I think your priorities are not on Target, I think your vision is not really in line with what Southville stands for. I think me and others are sick and tired of you always talking about Taylor, Michigan. Maybe we need to explore the option of changing Southville to Taylorfield. And I'm going to finish real early, but I think looking at these expenditures is really silly, considering our employees do not have a contract. And how long are you going to? And how long are you going to keep going on and on and on before you settle the contract? We can't move on with anything new and anything visionary until you settle that contract. Now, you think it's funny. I hope they really scrutinize you in your evaluation.
The second person is Gerard Mullin. You have three minutes. Clock is started.
Gerard Mullin, Post Office, Plax One Fifty-Five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. In the fall of two thousand and eleven, I got a legal notice in the mail for a public hearing from the Southfield Planning Commission in regards to a special use for an O S property near my house. This type of mailed invitation to a public hearing is mandated by state law, Public Act One Ten of two thousand and six. When I went to the Southfield Planning Department to inspect the public file regarding said public hearing, I was told that a FOIA was required in order to view such documents. In prior public hearings, I never needed a FOIA to inspect a public file. The Michigan FOIA law was passed in nineteen seventy-six to make government more transparent. This city has turned FOIA upside down and has used FOIA to make Southfield's government less transparent. In Southfield, a resident must pay a FOIA tax, that is, a poll tax, in order to fulfill one's civic duty. Now, fast forward to two thousand and sixteen. On January nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen, the city of Southfield requested additional information from the M D E Q in the form of six questions regarding Jordan Development Company's request for a M D E Q permit to drill an oil well on the grounds of World of Faith. A month later, at the February seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen, M D E Q public hearing at Southfield High, the M D E Q admitted publicly that they had not responded to the city's six questions for additional information. The M D E Q is really sticking it to the city of Southfield. What goes around comes around. What the city of Southfield did to me in two thousand and eleven is what the M D E Q is doing to the city of Southfield in two thousand and sixteen, which tells me that the system works. It gets even better, folks. The M D E Q required Jordan Development to notify Oakland County as part of the drilling application process. I have in my hand a copy of that gory notification dated October thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. That was sent by Jordan Development to the Oakland County Clerk, Lisa Brown. I'd like to read the last sentence from this notice, and I quote, "If you should have any questions, please feel free to call me at the number listed above." Unquote. It is clear to me how the city of Southfield can get their six questions answered about Jordan's oil drilling project.
Your turn, sir.
Simply route your questions to Lisa Brown.
The next person that asked for time is Charlie Gilliam.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's a pleasure to, uh, let you, to address the city council. I know been in this party over here. I thought, you know, this was going to be the day, so that's why I'm here tonight. About one hundred years ago, the Titanic sank in four hours on its first maiden jo, uh, voyage. Less than five to fifteen miles from there, in those four hours, was a freighter. Despite flares in four hours, despite the fog horn in four hours, they did nothing. And they recorded in records, said what happened in four hours. They didn't come to the rescue. Now, at the last city council meeting, I was here, and I asked you guys about water, and I'm, I wanted, I want to praise you that you stepped up. I seen the water out in the, in the lobby there, and it was, I was so filled with joy that you guys stepped up, because if that freighter had have went, it would took them less than forty-five minutes to get there. Flare is forty ma, forty-five minutes from here, so I thank you for guys for stepping up here in Southfield. I thank city council. Also, uh, when I wanted to talk at the last city council meeting, but I ran out of time, we do support our, our police officer and our police chief, and we have one of the greatest police chiefs, I believe, in the United States, right here in Southfield. You know, in December, he asked for the state of the art bulletproof vest for our officers, and you guys stepped right up in December and approved it. Last month, you know, he asked for, um, you know, updated firearms. And you guys stepped right up, the same kind that the FBI and the Secret Service use. And, um, he also asked for eleven new police vehicles with the top of the line, brand-new tires on the coast. They said be turning on wheels every day, driving out there to protect us here in Southfield. And I'm so happy that you guys, you know, came to the, uh, you know, our police department, looking out for our, our police officers. So thank you.
You're welcome. The next person is Daniel Mazolink.
Yep. All right. This is the first time I approach. It's a pleasure meeting everybody. I've done background checks on all you guys, impressive. Ms. Seymour, I got, I'm going to give, let you guys pass these around. You're, I'm a go-green guy. I ride my bicycle. I've lived here all my life, almost. Okay, you can give that to city council. It's about weed blowers, these two-cycle weed blowers. I live over here on Hilton Drive behind Jeffrey Feiger's office. Ninety-eight percent of the time, it's beautiful. Let's say the master golf tournament's coming up. I invite any one of you guys, come to my house. I barbecue. I got a beautiful backyard, a fish pond. My house sits back. I put beautiful trees around it. I've lived there for twenty-four years now. I was raised in Southfield, right close to the mayor's house. My parents lived here. I went to Southfield Grace Elementary, Letterly Junior High. I graduated from Southfield High. I got a letter from my hockey there. His son, I know all about this gentleman here, went through the hockey program, the more and baseball area. I'm a Southfielder. Okay. My deal is, on Saturdays, I'm home. I'm a plumbing contractor. I know, I know Linwood Pipe and Supply. If you guys want building, I'm the guy to, but on Saturdays, I work hard all day long. I come home, and all of a sudden, here they come, Feiger's office, these two-cycle weed blowers. It's like having a snowmobile race in my backyard. It's like having, if, if I had this right now and fired up in this room during your meetings, you guys would have me arrested. I don't mind. We have to solve this issue, because when I'm home, I don't know if it's going to happen at seven. They've done it at seven o'clock in the morning. You're not supposed to start till eight. They've done it, they come in, sometimes all of a sudden at ten o'clock they're there. Sometimes they're at two o'clock, some, I don't know. Let's get where Feiger will have to, let me know. I'm not saying not use them, but hey, it even says in the owner's manual, I got an owner's manual, that you're only, they don't even recommend using two or three at a time. They get, they're out there with three of these things, and his building is like an amplifier. I can't enjoy my house. I cannot open my screen door. I can't sit and read a book. I can't look at my fish in my fish pond. The stuff blows over my fence, and it goes on all day, eight hours. We got to do something. All I ask, I said not to do it, all I want is to say, hey, you can use them two hours on a Saturday. I could put up with it for two hours, but all day, from eight o'clock till nine o'clock at night, on a Saturday, in my backyard of a house that I've lived in for twenty-two years? That's all I ask, is we got to work out an agreement. And it even says in the owner's manuals, I hope you guys read it, I got an owner's manual, not to use them for over an hour, and respect your neighbor. That's on your Southfield sign, respect your neighbor. I am a neighbor. And my neighbor's next door to me and everything, I got along with all my neighbors. Larry Wisney, a very good friend of mine. Do you guys know who Larry is? He's a very good friend of mine. He own Pico Corporation here in Southfield. Sold to Taffia. I know a lot of big, my friends own Papa Romano's pizzas, the Morelli brothers, the Southfield Police Department just had their, their Christmas party at my friend's restaurant over on Twelve Mile and Woodward. The Morellis, they're my friends. Do, you know, I know all these, I played hockey in this town and all that. And all I ask is for some respect, because I do love living here. I never thought, I moved back, I used to live in Aspen, Colorado. I moved out of here in nineteen seventy-five. I lived there. I lived in Telluride, Colorado. I lived in Boulder, Colorado. And I became a plumber. My uncle owns the largest plumbing wholesale company in Denver. I got, I know, I know this guy that owns Linwood Pipe and Supply. You probably know him. This guy's a billionaire. He sold to Ferguson. Anyways, I just want that. And then one thing with Seymour, the speed limit on Evergreen should be put down to four, thirty miles an hour. Forty's insane. You go forty, down to fifteen.
Time to hit a roundabout?
Just think about it, I'll come back on, that's good, thirty miles an hour. Take your time coming through this one strict square mile, because I almost get killed, and I ride my bicycle.
Your time is up.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it, and hopefully we can do something about the weed blowers. I'll be back, and I gave you.
It's like a mosquito in your ear when you're trying to.
Yeah, well, I'm loud too. You should hear the weed blowers. And I'm Hungarian and Polish.
I didn't say you were a mosquito.
Okay, so I gave everybody pamphlets. Hopefully you read them, and I'll come back, and maybe we can get, so I have some respect on my weekends. Thank you, you guys.
Mr. Zarg.
And it does say right here in your article.
Your time is up.
That's what got me go-green.
Your time is, your time is up.
I know, go-green, it says right here. So I'm.
And I only have one copy of this.
I'm coming back to see if there's anything else.
We've been approached by a gentleman here to, uh, who would like to acquire the, the northeast corner of Hazelhurst and Kiefer. It is just north of the Lear Building. He owns parcel number six and has parcel number seven under option. Parcel eight, he's made an offer of twenty-four thousand. That's the number that the assessor's office feels the property's worth. The property's owned light industrial. He's proposing to build a warehouse. We acquired the property through tax foreclosure a number of years. He's aware of that the title had to be cleared. My question is, is would there be a desire to move this forward on the twenty-ninth as a consent type?
Do you have any problem with it?
I, I'm actually recommending it. We, we first spent quite a bit of time, there's been some possible discussion about Lear going for an expansion, and the first thing we wanted to do was make sure that they weren't looking for any more land, so we've, you know, we, we, that has been ruled out, and it's my recommendation that we sell the property.
Okay.
Kate Higgs. Can I, what's it, what's the corner now? Give me the two streets.
It's Hazelhurst and Kiefer.
All right, what I suggest is, you, and I'm, I'm just going to say, let's move it forward to the twenty-ninth, because he's been sitting here all night long waiting for at least some information. But I'm going, I'm going to ask that you do some kind of a write-up that will come in our package on next Friday.
Right.
So we'll at least be able to familiarize ourselves with the situation, so we'll feel more comfortable next Monday making a decision.
I'll do a full write-up and give you more background data, how we acquired, um, and such.
Okay.
How big is that?
Point six seven. Point six seven acres.
Point six seven?
Yeah.
Point six seven, three quarters of an acre.
Mr. Administrator, this is property that we're currently mowing, right?
Probably.
Not getting any taxes?
This one's pretty tree, isn't it?
It's, yeah, it's heavily wooded.
Okay, but we're not getting any taxes, like, yeah.
That's great. Okay?
Is he needed? Tree, tree, uh.
Permission?
If he tries, if he wants to clear it.
He'll go through, orders required with, with plan, and he's very true.
He knows the drill.
Okay. So we'll get that in our package this coming Friday?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, is there anything else to come before, Mr. Mandelbaum?
Really quick, I got a phone call my way here about the assessments that went out that people received today in the mail and whatnot. I guess there's no way to come before the board to make a reservation or appointment, to come before the board unless you show up in person? You couldn't call anyone or there wasn't?
To appeal your assessment?
To appeal your assessment, correct. And they're just wondering why there's no.
Was it one week in March?
Yeah, but I think the initial question is even to come set that.
To come set the appointment, you have to show us in person.
Yeah, I.
But they'll accept a written communication.
Can, can they accept a representative? Because I said on that board, land, you have a representative.
To make an, to make an appointment. That's, that's what they want, they want to make an appointment to appear before the board, but it said to make an appointment, you have to show up in person.
They don't want to show up in person, or they're going to be out of town, or?
They, they work during the day, and it makes it difficult for them.
No.
To, to come during our hours.
Can they, can they call and make a bid on?
Well, that's the question.
There were supposedly, I didn't see it, but he said there were no instructions on the call.
Is it?
They should call Mike Grant.
Yeah.
They asked, yeah.
Call him, they asked. I know Mike Grant. He'll make a.
I mean, typically, you could send a letter, you could make an appointment, and then there is a period of time for people to kind of open, come in.
Yeah, they said a time to get an appointment, and when I was there, they had a boy that represented, a son represented a mom.
Right.
So, so they, they had people representing you.
It said, wasn't the, the problem is to set the appointment?
Right. If, if it says you have to come in just to make the appointment.
Right.
I, I think Mike could answer that easily.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else to come before the, the council? Seeing nothing else, support.